Council.
No.
And so there is a ton of hard work frankly done by I T and some public ops support to get all these things installed, change the tables. Played the configuration that the intent is to make it a little more council centric. So you can actually look staff in the eye as opposed to us staring each other in the eye. And frankly, it got me away from. The last two years. So. Please let us know how this works or doesn't work for you, right? But this was kind of the model. We figured we'd take a bit of a test drive on and see how it works.
Sally, just so you know, you're looking over my shoulder.
No. That creeps me out.
It was it was tough during the youth advisory committee meetings. We turned the TVs off because it was so creepy having them them on.
Hear that? Did you hear that?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is very exciting. That's very little to make me excited.
Who's hosting the Zoom call?
Renee is.
Start as soon as I can get into the Zoom. Go. Okay, uh, I will call the meeting to order for our standing committee of the whole. Falling on a scale for September tenth, two thousand and twenty four. Attendance at the start of the meeting is a hundred percent with Council Jolly and Council Vermont's the virtual. Testing out a new. Configuration. You guys let me know what you think. I like it so far. We have one addition to the agenda. So we're going to do an in camera emergent item. So seven point one. Staff.
Staff.
Matters. Staff matters. Okay, so we're going into camera for. Labor issues. So with that addition, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended? Go ahead.
Don't have a button to push.
Yes, I do.
You push my button all the time. I just.
September tenth, twenty twenty four agenda be adopted as amended.
Let go. All those in favor?
This one. Was there H R in the room here?
Unanimous? And then the minutes from way back in June, if everybody remembers that meeting and errors or emissions? No one has any changes?
That the standing committee of the whole meeting minutes of June eleventh, twenty twenty four be adopted, presented.
That's unanimous. All right. Long awaited. Community needs assessment. Community social roadmap. Look at the team we got here today. I say I had a sneak peek as Connie gave this presentation just a rotary about two weeks ago. So are you gonna kick it off, Connie? How's it? How's it going?
Ready to go.
Ready to go. I've got Elizabeth here. Did you want to introduce it?
I do want to introduce it. And then I will. Hand this over to this fabulous team. Um, this is a continuation of our previous update. We came to you with our community social needs assessment. And this is that opportunity to look at the roadmap. Um, our work in F C S S. Has revealed what we all know. There is a significant gap in the social supports and experiences. That our residents are like are needing to to access and need, and we are seeing increased vulnerabilities for many of our residents than we've ever seen previously. Everywhere we look in the region, we are starting to see those societal impacts. People in crisis, people asking for help at intersections, tents popping up in neighborhoods we've never seen them before. When we met with the community last year to start to to look at this updated needs assessment. It was clear that many social service organizations were stretched beyond their capacity. They were managing higher demands with fewer staff and volunteers, reduced donations and funding, and in many cases. Hadn't met with each other in person since before the pandemic. This is not how these organizations had previously operated. They had thrived on collaboration and being able to support each other. Part of the challenge of putting this roadmap together and the steps that come next is re. Reacquainting all of these organizations with each other to ensure that that collaborative work. Uh, can be built up again and continue because when we share the load of this responsibility across our entire. Community, we do it better and we serve more people more effectively. As we prioritize the areas of social needs, it's natural for us to want immediate action and quick solutions. However, the nature of this preventive work means we're focusing further upstream. And while planning is underway, it really is a work in progress. Our team, our partners, our stakeholders, are committed to making progress on this roadmap. As we navigate all of the things that all of our residents are navigating, inflation. Capacity challenges, burnouts, even the increasing complexity of just the world that we are living in and the things that we are dealing with. I look forward to standing here in a year and sharing with you progress that we've made on this roadmap. I've invited the team that does this work and works with our community stakeholders and partners and organizations year round. Um, to make. The goals of this roadmap. Come to life. And so as they go through the presentation today, you will see. Those that are their responsibility areas are where they're speaking to. So Connie Smigelski, our senior manager. And her primary portfolio is family and community support services. Debbie Scoy, our social planner. You've probably had an opportunity to see her work for years as the person that continues to update these social priorities. And help us figure out the strategies and actions that we need to take as a community and then provide those updates annually so that we know we are moving the needle. Linda Nadwa, who is our manager of F C S S strategies. And then Jennifer McCullough, did I pronounce your new last name correctly?
Close.
Close. Please say it for me.
McKella.
McKella, um, who is our manager of community, our sorry, F C S S supports. Um, we'll see that this roadmap is intended to align and form several strategic and operational plans that. Provide direction to administration as much as this is a community. Document. So we would see it coming up in things like how we work towards community well being. How we support the development of mixed housing, including transitional housing, and even informing things like mobility choices. And I will leave it to you.
Oh, sorry. One last word in. Connie would really appreciate truly. If a question comes to mind while this presentation is happening, for you to ask it as we're going, there will be room and space at the end of the presentation, but if we can. Address it while we're at that point, it will make things so much easier for us. Thank you.
So we can interrupt you.
Yes, please.
I'm gonna interrupt you before you even start.
Please do.
I talked about getting Craig a desk.
Set that up so quick.
There's one right behind me.
Well, we will leave that one there.
Yeah. Use this one?
Yeah.
Not used to having it show up in person, which we appreciate. So we're gonna get that done.
Even if we're trying to be in need of whistle.
I came back this morning and said, oh, my little boss, is there a piece of script? You're all just. I apologize for the sensation.
Okay, sorry about that.
All right, go ahead, Connie.
Hey. Morning and thank you so much for having us here this morning to present. We're really excited to have a new roadmap for the next. Five to ten years to guide our work. And happy to present. Excited. So. We're here today to provide an overview and highlights of the community social needs assessment final report. All of you will have received a copy. And a little bit of a of a review of what we shared last time we were here in the spring. So the role of government. Is to focus on prevention. That's outlined by our F C S S accountability framework. Um, it sets local priorities that align with identified community needs and prevention priorities. Um, our focus is to support individuals, families and communities through preventive social service programs and services, including primary. Ideally addressing root causes and secondary addressing issues at the earliest stages. We leverage the local community capacity in our design, in our delivery and coordination of services. And so. It's would be amiss to say that none of this could be possible without all of the contributions from our community.
So how did we get here? As Elizabeth alluded to, the roadmap is based on phase one and phase two findings. And it really does build on the community's longstanding work accomplishments, collaboratives and partnerships. That have been developed over the years, providing social services in St. Albert. So ten issues emerged as social as focus areas to that guide our work. Each focus area has an outcome statement or statements. Um, that provides why we're doing the work and what we hope to achieve. Each focus area has community indicators to help track our progress and our and and keep us accountable. And of course, recommendations and actions. The focus areas validate the work that we're currently doing. Recommendations and supporting actions reflect and include many of the community initiatives that are already under under in in place. And as well, actions that are proposed that can be explored to achieve recommendations. Priority per action. Have been and I have been identified to help inform action, planning and implementation. The majority of actions identified are deemed high priority and we're doing work around all of this. Where applicable, key stakeholders have been identified for each action. As additional actions and community initiatives are developed, new stakeholders will be identified.
So the first of the ten priority areas, and they're just in alphabetical order, not in terms of priority. Um, so the first one is aging in place, which is seniors are engaged and have access to supports needed to age in place. And why is this important? Aging in place is a current prevention priority in the Alberta Family and Community Support Services. Accountability framework. So it is an area we have to focus on. And also through the community social needs assessment, aging in place ranked as the top issue identified by those who were over sixty. And was ranked fifth as being the most important issue from the aggregate or the total survey population. Say now in St. Albert, one in five residents, so twenty percent of our population is over sixty five years of age. So we have a significant number of seniors in our community, and it is the fastest growing demographic in Canada. So what does that mean for our work? We have seniors advisory committee, which certainly council is more than familiar with. The new senior service award, which is for those that are fifty five plus and have a significant impact in volunteerism in the community. One of the primary areas of work that we have from the community strategies team is we do have what we call an older adults working group. Which is an F C S S led group with eleven community members or community partners, pardon me, and those partners, some of them are social profits, some of them are private, and some of them are government. So it's a really quite a unique group of folks. And their twenty twenty four action plan, the relevant issues that they are focusing on is aging in place, primary healthcare, elder abuse. Mental health and social isolation, awareness and access of services. Knowing that we don't have direct influence in all of those areas, but the group will impact or influence these areas in the. In the form of education and awareness. Creating and expanding programs and services where we can and advocacy.
And.
That's an okay.
Yeah, just a question. So aging in place. As we all age, healthcare becomes a big part of it. I noted you mentioned primary care. How is that link going to be? Engaged in the bigger question that we're dealing with.
With the deal. Yeah. And a lot of that for us is going to be in bringing the partners we have together and doing that advocacy work to other areas because we can't. Directly influence a lot of those health areas. So having those partners at the table that do provide those service to find out where we can. Best leverage those resources, how we can work together to have them have the. Uh, best impact for the seniors are in our community and where as a larger group, we actually just have to take an advocacy role and say this is what we need. To different levels of government.
We have unwilling partners.
Thus far, yes, this is a really. Great, interesting group that has come together and. Has a clear sense of purpose. Welcome.
She's on her phone.
Um, you're next.
The, uh, so our recent census and you, because it just follow up on the question, the comment you made about the fact that. It's growing and our population growing. Did our census? Do we know if our census showed that that follows through with our data that our age, like, is there a kind of a tipping point in relation to the fact where. We're going to get maybe ten years down the road and find out that our actual kind of population matrix is actually less than the nineteen point four?
I don't know the answer to that with the census. Yeah.
The census numbers are preliminary right now. They're still being verified and we are working on the on the report that analyzes all of the data. Particular reference to like those kinds of facts. That's not ready yet. We'll be ready till the early or late fall. So as soon as it's ready, we will send it to you. So for now, we don't. It is a preliminary question. Um. But we will know in a few months.
I I mean, it would just go to. I mean, identifying priorities now, dealing with, like you said, but then also. Being prepared to deal with people.
Down the road.
Doubt.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ben Natalie. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, so I I'm curious about the working group a little bit. So I, this is my professional world is aging in places is what I've done since before being elected and what I do now. So I I don't see the city of St. Albert at a lot of the. Kind of groups or people that I that I meet with um i- in this area. Are we really just kind of sticking to St. Albert based? Stakeholders or how how is that stakeholder group kind of representative of kind of a a bigger um impact? Provincially, because I mean, a lot of this stuff is is provincial.
Yeah, um, it's. Primarily St. Albert focused groups or delivering services in St. Albert. They could be provincial groups that also deliver services in St. Albert. But the common thread. Of the working group is that everybody who's at that table is involved in. Delivering services or working with seniors in St. Albert.
Okay, so we we're not like trying to connect with, you know, the Gerontology Association or the folks doing research and caregiving at the U of A or anyone like that?
Not at this point. If you would like, I do have the list of working group members in front of me that I could share with you who's at that table, if that's helpful.
Yeah, that'd be interesting to hear.
Sure. So we've got the St. Albert Seniors Association. We have a court city of St. Albert, our F C S S, a community development coordinator. We have Ben V River Ridge Housing, St. Albert Further Education, Covenant Health, Uville Home, St. Albert Public Library. Uh, Safe Stop Abuse in Families, uh, St. Albert Sturgeon Primary Care Network, the geriatric nurse attends. Alberta Health Services Geriatric Recreation Therapist from the Day Clinic at the hospital. St. Albert Bereavement Fellowship. There's a board member from there. And the St. Albert Sturgeon Hospice Association Program Manager and Seniors Advisory Committee Representative.
So nothing having to do with caregivers, eh?
No, we've recently worked, our community development coordinator recently worked with Sasha with St. Albert Sturgeon Hospice Association. To help write a grant to apply for caregiver supports and the Compass Caregiver Program to get some. More caregiver type resources in the community, but that grant just went in.
And I mean, caregivers Alberta already exists. So would that be duplicating the services they provide?
It no, not competing in conjunction with.
Okay.
It aligns with. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um.
You're welcome.
That's all I have, Mary.
So now we'll look at child and youth development, particularly social emotional development. This refers to a child's ability to create and sustain meaningful relationships with adults and other children. Emotional development is a child's ability to express, recognize and manage their emotions as well as respond appropriately to others' emotions. So why is this important? St. Albert's population between the ages of five and nineteen is nineteen percent, which is greater than the provincial average. Youth have been identified as one of the underserved groups in the community. Promoting healthy relationships and social emotional development in children and youth is an outcome identified. By the Alberta's Family and Community Support Services Accountability Framework. And through the needs assessment, youth identified issues being important to them as discrimination. Child abuse, mental health, housing affordability, suicide, primary healthcare and domestic and sexual violence. So what does this mean to council and the community? We have the youth advisory committee and youth in action, which provide great opportunities for youth to get engaged and connected with their community, fostering growth and personal development. And did you know that in two thousand and twenty three, we introduced Soul Fire, which is an extension of our classroom presentations at the St. Albert Mall and the library? Soul Fire provides a platform for youth that are interested in enhancing their mental health and giving them a comfortable place to learn and belong.
So, you know, we talk about their emotional development and they're actively engaged. So how do we deal with physical? Like as in healthy lifestyles, healthy, do we tie in with anything with recreation or?
Yeah, we do. We do have different programs where we connect with recreation, um, where we'll connect with the, um. Roaming rep crew or, um, we'll, um, yeah, connect with the different coordinators. Um, they're at different tables, you know, that we sit on. So whether it's, um, the youth table or we have the, um, uh, community. Resource coordinators on table. And so, um, yeah, they're present there as well. Um, also, like, I know that, um, our coordinator who does work in the schools, um, she connects a lot with rep. And she's doing some of her, um, soul fire sessions geared towards, you know, healthy lifestyle as well, which involves healthy eating. They have like one session on like making healthy smoothies and. Um, incorporating different recreation opportunities as well. So there's that mental health, um, but then the other aspects of health as well that are incorporated.
Thanks.
I'm gonna show my age in the long I've been around. So don't laugh. Forty developmental assets. Is it something we still talk about? And yes, we do. Yeah. Do we track it like we used to? It looks a little bit different. Um, the philosophy is still very much used with our youth in action. Group and our youth that we still have the youth asset coordinator that engages in schools and talks about how we talk less about the list of forty because people do tend to. Glaze over a little bit, but you start listing forty. So we do talk more about those eight areas of development and how we work with that with youth in action. And also at the youth advisory council and the opportunities. So it looks different. Than when we started it, but yes, it's still very much incorporated into the work. Do we still kind of break it up into external and internal assets? So it's external that I think that the city can help with, right?
Help with in that area for sure. Yeah. You must, you're not that old.
There's only twenty two developmental assets now.
Exactly. We just said over to about two thousand and eight.
It was like seventy.
That's right. Other questions? We're good. Hey, so the third one civic involvement and volunteerism. So residents are actively engaged and participate. In civic processes and volunteer opportunities. So again, the importance of this one civic involvement and volunteerism promote social connection and do help combat lonely, sorry, pardon me. Combat loneliness across generations. Volunteering does forge stronger, more resilient communities and promotes a sense of meaning and belonging. Civic involvement is essential because it allows citizens to influence policy, local values and municipal government priorities. Promoting and encouraging active engagement in the community is a current provincial prevention priority as well. Our research does tell us fewer than one in four people are volunteering. We know that the reduction in those volunteering is a worldwide issue. It is not unique to St. Albert, Alberta, Canada. It's worldwide. Declining volunteerism directly impacts charities and nonprofits' ability to survive and serve their communities. And more than one third of nonprofits are expected to have increased reliance on volunteers. Well, about one in twenty were at risk of closing. So what does that mean? How do we sort of impact that? Again, as council is more than aware, we have our youth advisory committee. And our seniors advisory committee that work closely with council. The senior service award acknowledging, again, we talked about it in the senior section, that fifty five plus volunteer. We do have a St. Albert and area volunteer managers group that one of our community strategy staff. Or nates and leads that group. There are twenty seven members who are. Who are actively involved in that group. They do meet every other month. I believe their meeting is every other month. Uh, the city's. Website page has been. Improved. To have a list of volunteer opportunities on that page. So if you go on, there's, I think there's twenty. Two, I think there's twenty two. So it'll list the agency and you can click right on the agency. It'll take you right to the volunteer. Link to the page of that agency and what the opportunities might be. So we've worked a bit with I T in that area and I think it's. It's a much easier sort of place to navigate. We'll be hosting a information and volunteer fair on October sixth here in St. Albert Place over in the area in front of the Arden. And the purpose of that fair is twofold. One, to. Offer the opportunity for our agencies to talk about what they do do in the community and what what they can offer for our communities. And the second is for those agencies to be able to recruit volunteers. And we currently have twenty two folks registered to attend that event. Um, but there's still time until the end of September. For our agencies to register.
We're good.
One in four, pardon me, so fewer than one in four are volunteering?
That's yes. Yeah.
All right, Julie.
I I I did have a comment from a member of the community that mentioned some of the nonprofits. Once they get to, you know. Higher funding levels or administration or paid, you know, huge amounts of money and then they're still expecting the volunteerism. The volunteerism falls off because people aren't seeing it as a nonprofit at that point in time. Have you had any comments about that in relation to volunteering?
Not that I have heard directly. No, no, or from our community. Strategy staff that. Sits at that table. That's not something she's mentioned at all.
Okay. And then another question is incentivizing volunteerism was one of the bullets in your presentation there. Can you explain what you mean by that?
Some of the, an example would be the Elder Service Award. So acknowledging when folks are volunteering in our community. And then also, especially with some of our younger. Folks that were trying to engage in volunteerism, talking to them about what the what the benefit for them to volunteer is as well in terms of. Applications to university resume writing. Sometimes part time jobs can be challenging to find, but volunteering can also look really great on a resume. So incentivizing in that way in terms of why they would want to be engaged in the community doing that.
Okay. And in the same respect, you teach just the idea of volunteering for the sake of just volunteering, not just for a resume?
Absolutely. Yes, no, absolutely. In terms of you get a lot from living in a community and the only way you get a lot is to give a lot in that reciprocal why you would do that. To be part of a community.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Jenna, she know then can.
So, okay, so I'm looking at the the page that you have with the twenty two.
Yes.
So if somebody wanted to be added to this page, how would they do it? What about it? Because there's no instructions here about how to do that.
There's not a contact person?
This is contact, but it doesn't say if you'd like to have your community added to it.
Good catch.
So you would contact. Um, because I mean, certainly, um, it appears to be most of them that we. Couple of them I haven't seen before, but that we are funding and then a few people that we haven't seen. Yeah, but there's a, there's a lot of organizations that. Yeah, but there's a, there's a lot of organizations that we volunteer.
Absolutely.
So, um, even if you want to put disclaimer to say that they are listening to me, but we have no opinion about, you know, anything about.
What they do or don't do. Yeah.
Yeah, you know, whether you're gonna enjoy it or not, we, that's not what we're for us to decide.
Yeah.
Because I just, I know that there's so many, like you said, some of your close to actually closing their doors in some capacity and it's not an inclusive list.
No, that's a great idea. We can add that very easily. Ask for. Yeah.
Um, so that was that. The other thing I had, looked at your metrics that you had on your slide, um, because we just have. But the challenge I have is I see what we're doing, but I don't see what we're doing a lot differently that we that would actually make an impact. So this is kind of stating what we're already at versus how are we going to do something substantially different to actually encourage this to happen? Because as we know, we closed civic closed and so that was the intention, um, with youth community, which really is not interested in doing it, but I don't see how what we're doing will change the numbers. So that that's where I'm trying to figure out what the plan would be to make that happen. I don't expect you to have an answer today, but I'm just telling you like this is not going to actually change it. We're just going to continue to state it as an issue. But the community indicators, what I would like to see is how many, the percentage of community organizations, like whether or not they feel they can get enough volunteers, like how close are they to meeting their volunteer needs? And pulling anybody who has that we know that has not just the twenty-two, everybody that organizations say, do you have volunteers? How close are you to actually getting your volunteers that you need for the events, this kind of thing? Because then that would really be an indicator of whether or not we're able to meet community meets through volunteers. So that would be kind of where I would would go with those two, but I just, I don't see. Like the the senior service awards, yes, it's great, but and it's an acknowledgement, but it it certainly is not all inclusive about what we're trying to achieve on this. And certainly recognition of volunteers is one thing, but like I even look, I don't even have star like star literacy on here. Like this, which help people who are second English, second language, for example, I don't.
Be under further education.
Yeah.
But they're under one umbrella now. Yeah.
So there's like, even if we were to go here and say we're going to group it. So it's like, if your interest is in this, these would be the organizations that you could go to or something of that nature. If somebody came here and they were from St. Albert, came landed and they're like, what to do? They still have no idea where to go, really. They just have twenty-two listings. And then from there, they don't really even know if there's anything they want to do. Right? So, um, that's the, that's the challenge I think that I'm looking at here is that we like, we're just not moving the needle. We're just acknowledging the needle exists. So so I got for that. Thank you.
I think something that I would add, and that's a really good point. I think, um, I'm hoping three to five years from now, we may see that needle move because we've only really post-COVID, um, have been able to start to make some changes and look at volunteerism differently and see what those new needs are because for so long, um, it was changing, right? It it the how people volunteered and where they volunteered and why they volunteered. And that's come coming to light now post-COVID. So now with the new, the volunteer managers group is fairly new, putting the information on the website. I think all of these tactics, um, and having regular meetings with all of those groups will will be able to start to see that needle move. So I would hope less than, but at least in three to five years, I would think that we'll be able to see that needle move. Um, so that we're more meeting the new need of volunteerism because it's changed so much, why and how and when and.
Yeah, I I mean, I I agree this changed also hasn't. So like I want to go to the main page on the website. There's nothing listing here about you looking for volunteer resources.
Yeah.
And like, so if you don't know to look for it, it's other than having a nice page, no one's gonna know to look for it. There's also like nothing here about just like special event helping. So for example, the soapbox derby derby. They don't need people. Some people don't want to commit to an ongoing thing, but they are a good event.
Yes.
There's no event listings here where people could actually come and submit and say, hey, we have event volunteering, we're gonna need it on this date. And this is kind of what we're gonna need. If you wanted to do it, call and have them. That would also be useful. So like I just think there's just so much more to explore as far as the awareness factor.
Oh, there. Okay. Yeah. But again, so Buck Derby, you think
I'm not going to be on an annual committee that meets once a month and has to do a lot of work versus I just need somebody to make sure that ours don't run into the kids. So, um, you know, so anyway, that I just think that that's where we're kind of not, um, really taking advantage of the opportunities that we have of letting people know because people are willing to do it. Especially if they understand what the level of commitment that it just don't have anything separated by type of events or even type of of commitment or type of, um, jobs it might be expected to do. So, you know, people, even if we volunteer at the food bank, they don't know what they would be doing at the food bank like. And so you know, they, we were to contact them and say, you need to really explain like what are the type of jobs that you might be doing? Because all they, all I'm doing is putting food together, but they also have a community kitchen and they have other things that may be relevant. So there's just a lot more of things where people knew in advance. This is what the commitment would entail is it's Wednesday nights or it's Tuesday mornings depending on their type of flexibility of what they expect. Again, then they're more likely to say, hey, me. But people are hesitant to get in to say, I'm going to commit to something. Do they really understand what the commitment is? Afraid they're gonna be pressured to be continuing, but they, it's more than what they can fight off. So, um, yeah, I just feel like this area really hasn't been, um, utilized the best that we can. And that was kind of the intention when I had put forward that motion for was to say to increase the awareness, not just I exist, but what what can you do with my existence? Is kind of where I feel we're still missing the boat on this.
A little bit more work on that.
Yeah. Yeah. So anyway, that was it. That's all I got for now. I was talking.
Thank you for that.
My question maybe maybe falls on that or was part of that, um? You know, when we were doing the engagement, when we arrived at this kind of, when this kind of rose to the top in relation to the ten items. Did that come from our conversations we had with residents who completed a survey? Or was it something that we got from the stakeholders? Because obviously they were impacted by it. So where was it identified? Was it through the stakeholder interviews or would it have been through residents? Because it kind of is, it's chicken and egg kind of grocery type thing, right? And it kind of falls into it constantly because it's promised.
Yeah.
If you don't know about it, then you, why, you know, where does it rise to the top? But if you're a stakeholder who's providing those services and you're running into this wall of resources, then it's, then it rises to the top pretty fast. So where did, where did we get the? Like, how did this rank?
Right.
On your phase one or phase two engagement?
So so absolutely both the the civic involved and volunteerism showed up further on down, down the list of things and being a priority in both from the residents and from the stakeholders. Some of that was validated at the engagement session that we had in March, but again, did not rank as high, for example, as mental health. Right? So it was important enough to be on the list and something that we need to pay attention to because we're directly involved in that. So it was a combination of that. Tumbled with that was the research that we did to actually, you know, take a look what's happening elsewhere in the province across, you know, uh, Canada, what have you. And so it seems to be a, uh, challenge for for many, especially after the pandemic. So a combination of of many things.
Yeah, I I know when I talk to the community organizations, they say, you know, they run, they're running out of that growth. But I mean, a lot of those were almost social clubs before they were a community involvement and not the other way around, right? And so you kind of wonder maybe, maybe at what point there's a timeframe where people aren't going to maybe engage in more social activities together versus I'm, it'd be interesting to see what the research is showing in that. Because, I mean, you know, you look at some of these clubs that have been around forever. I'm not going to mention Rotary, uh, or you're going to get these other clubs, you know, like Eagles and and others. So that you know, like even they, they, they were strong in the, in the, in their formation years. But now they're kind of maybe. It it would just seem to see what the research shows. Because I know when we go to those events, it's almost sometimes same people involved with so multiple, multiple different social. And these are your volunteer champions, but at the same time, they're aging out. It would be interesting, interesting reason. I mean, all the Rotarians are getting old.
Well, I mean, not just the the Rotarians, exceptional class who's speaking for youth at all times. Just like I look at the Kinsman Club, the Connect Clubs, like none of those guys are listed on there either. And so like there's just so many that, you know, like just for the rodeo and the the parade of wealth and there's nothing listed. So the other thing that I was just encouraged me before I forget my mind, um, is that if we actually, people will say, I want to get more like community, like better mental health and feel more belonging. But the really honestly, when you commit to volunteering, you become part of the belonging. So people will often say, I want to lose weight, but they actually, but they'd like to do it while eating McDonald's. Whereas you can say, I'd like to become more involved, but I also don't want to leave my home. So once they realize that this is the way to becoming feeling a sense of belonging. I think that if the campaign was actually like feel part of a community, this is how you actually feel part of a community as opposed to just like help out. Then they actually see the benefit.
Doing so. Yeah.
So maybe you're doing already, but that's kind of what I'm thinking.
So actually just gonna just try to address a little bit of what you just said and a little bit of the nod towards the social serving organizations. So there's a bit of a, uh, like a super group, um, that has been formed, like that's what I'm going to call it. But the the goal of the Service Club of St. Albert's, um, organization is to, uh, build the volunteer base, um, and and support for existing community organizations across all of those social service organizations because they do see the need and they do see that their volunteers do work for across the community, not for any one particular, um, organization. And so they have formed a new society to start to really build that that volunteer group and that sort of that advocacy and that collaboration um, to improve, uh, that that's the volunteer, um, foundation for Rotary, Kinsman, um, et cetera. So again, new new ways of of doing this work and approaching this work, but but seeing that there's a need for a change and a new way of doing.
At the speed, I'm sure it was a kind of way to McDonald's too.
There's a whole movie about that. No, it didn't work. It didn't work out.
Anyway, so thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Just wanted, uh, Linda, to understand the one, what, what, how do we arrive at that number? Is it like one in four people that are over twenty-five or thirty?
Just in general, like it's a all encompassing, um, Canadians, like it's a stat, not our local, just in general in research, one in four. So it's kind of a bigger overarching.
Over eighteen. Does that like? Like I'm just trying to understand what is it the total population? Is it one in four? What does that mean?
That was, I'll speak to that. That was the national research that was done, probably from the Volunteer Canada. And, you know, I'd have to go back and look, but I suspect that they had a breakdown of age groups. But again, generally, I think the aggregate from the survey results, the research, if I recall correctly, that, you know, one in four are that's, that's the the data that was that they reported out on.
And again, my memory tells me, but I too am old. My memory tells me when we were looking at some of it, it started at age fifteen or sixteen. But I would want to go back and confirm what what that number was, but it was in around that because the if there would be less likelihood that an eight-year-old would be volunteering, not that they don't, along with family, of course, when family volunteers together, but.
Okay, no, it's just it's important to understand the numbers.
Yes, of course.
With the text that is kind of, um, asked me to, but anyway, maybe somebody could just follow up and say.
We certainly can.
Love to. But the core question to any of these things is why is volunteering down? The the why I I we haven't spoken about. And a lot of what I hear is that there's a lot of unsurveyed volunteering, if you will. Parents that volunteer huge amounts of hours for their sports teams. And it's that volunteer, you know, they they're not volunteering in the traditional sense of doing things for others, but they are committing their time to drive their kids to gymnastics or horseback riding or whatever. That their time that they would normally volunteer in a traditional sense is is used up, um, a lot of it looking after grandkids. They're, they don't have time to participate in a, a community group, but they're because they're sitting at three hours at their grandkids karate tournament. In terms of experience, um, and so I, I I wonder is like, I'd love to hear comments about the why? And are we really capturing all of that? I almost call it underground volunteering that is also time that is is spent in in that sense.
No, I think, I mean, it's a, it's a great question and it's, it's a huge question because things are significantly different. Um, and when you think about the, there are twenty-four hours in a day, no matter what. So if you are doing the gate at your child hockey game for the penalty box for three hours twice a week. You're right, we don't necessarily capture that in the way we talk about volunteerism, capital V, in the traditional way. So I don't know if part of the answer is we start to look at how do we capture volunteerism and are we actually accurately reflecting? Or, and it might not be an or, it might be an and, and the demands placed on families do look different and the hours just aren't there for people to do, even if they wanted to. And does it then become that place where when your children are young adults and and need you less? And still need who, but then you're also into that aging adult. It is, it is a huge question, I think, in terms of how as societies we operate. And maybe we do need to capture volunteerism differently. Maybe that's a really good point.
The one in four though is through surveys and asking people, national surveys.
You volunteer, volunteer. Yeah.
There's three in four that's saying, I don't volunteer. So if you were opening the gate at your kids.
Yes.
Yeah, I volunteer.
Yeah.
If you're on a condo ward, like I think you would say.
You're volunteering. I was opening gates and volunteering.
Just if you'd be a mom, right? Yeah.
Said, no. I don't volunteer.
If you're coaching, you might say.
If I was coaching, I might. But all of the other pieces that, yeah, I would, I would have said no. Which is an interesting question.
I I would just offer that, you know, this is not a St. Albert. This is a national issue. It's, St. Albert's not going to solve it. And there's responsibility with the groups themselves as well, right, to be part of the solution. So it's a great discussion about how we manage this. It's also one of ten parties. Manage some expectations that I think there are some perhaps non-traditional ways that we can move the yardsticks on this. Um, our interface and and the awareness being probably a good example of how we could do that. But I just want to, you know, again, uh, this is a national sort of challenge and I think that solution is is, yeah, there's a St. Albert component of it. There's a regional component, there's provincial, there's national component of it. I just want to sort of manage that sort of.
I'm going to get an answer on the why, but.
Can I just take just a second in it? I think in your question, you actually did acknowledge the why. So as a grandparent, you acknowledge that your time is spent moving your children or your grandchildren from activity to activity to from school. Um, the reason that you're doing that is because families no longer have a stay-at-home parent that can do that. So the generation that we have relied on to volunteer for years, they are now actively engaged in helping the younger generations get through their day-to-day because homes are filled with people that are have full-time jobs now. There isn't somebody home to do that work. People are working longer. They are choosing to retire much later in life because of the financial like challenges, which means they're not ready to go back into the community and get back until they are in their late sixties, early seventies, as opposed to seeing that happen in their late fifties. Freedom fifty-five is not a reality.
Restructuring is a big role.
Absolutely.
Yep.
All these phrases, domestic.
Thank you. So this kind of touches on something, Mr. Fletcher, you you mentioned in terms of enabling organizations, um, to kind of do this work for themselves. So in my experience, so at at my organization, we turn down volunteers because we have too many. Um, and I know, you know, at the the summer camps for for service place, they have more volunteers than they know what to do with. I mean, it's, it's, um, it's fantastic. Um, but what kind of work is being done? Um, because you know, when I think of those two organizations, we do a really good job of uh, promoting our volunteer. uh, promoting our volunteer programs. How are we enabling organizations to do that, that maybe don't have the tools to, to recruit kind of in a more electronic landscape, if you will?
May I? May I, if I may? One of the goals of the Volunteer Managers Working Group is exactly that, Natalie. Or Counselor Charlie, pardon me, is identifying, sorry, I was in a different place. And identifying how we can collectively do that and how we can support some of our agencies in doing that. So is it a collective? Um, something on the website as, as you've suggested, Counselor Hughes. Is it a collective social media presence in terms of how do we do that? So that is actually one of the goals that they're looking at for twenty twenty-four is how do we worked together? How can we as a municipality perhaps, but how can the agencies, the social profits work together to do that, to raise that awareness, to talk about how? So they're not left with one, um, you know, a, a smaller social profit that just doesn't have the capacity to do it. How can we use the collective capacity to do it? I don't know if that answers your question.
I think there's a part of it too, that is about the mentorship that they give each other. So there are um, there are participants in the working group that are successfully doing this, that do have the challenge of too many volunteers interested in doing the work. And there are organizations that don't have enough and how they can share what they've learned and what their experience is with each other so that they can be using the tools that are working successfully across all the organizations rather than just having the, the groups that have too much and the, the groups that are dealing with scarcity.
Yeah, and I, I guess that was kind of where my question was more going is, you know, I think of, you know, the, the rodeo parade. Um, how, how does Kinsman get set up so it's really clear what volunteers are needed and what that entails? Um, because I, I don't know that that, I'm just using as an example, I don't actually know what they have, but, um, I, to from my perspective, it seems like that's the biggest problem. And I don't know that capacity i- is the issue. I, I mean, it might be in certain cases, but, but it seems like a lot of people just don't know how to find volunteers. Um, so yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad that we're here group exists, but, but I think there's a lot of opportunities there. Um, my second question is kind of around, um, discussions that we had around the Youth Advisory Committee table about volunteerism in St. Albert. So Counselor Hughes, your motion actually did, um, start some really great discussions, but the feedback that um, that table was providing is that people are, are tired, like they've got so many extracurricular activities. Um, eh, eh, and it's just, you know, so eh, they're, they're not finding time to do extra stuff. And, you know, the comments about caregiving, um, you know, grandkids, but also, um, aging parents um, is, you know, the statistics are harrowing in, in Canada about the number of caregivers. So I, I mean, is, is there some kind of understanding that, you know, if, if things stay the way they are, there just won't be as many volunteers as there have been in the past? Or, or are we just trying to be hopeful, I guess?
I think the answer to that is both, again, acknowledging, like you say, that for many peoples, we talked about the twenty-four hours in a day, we're not going to be able to create more hours in a day or impact that. But doing what we can to, you know, as we've talked about, make the opportunities or awareness as best we can. So when people do have those spaces in their lives or something, speak to them about, oh, I really like that activity, I could afford a few hours or, or what have you, and learning from each other, as, as Elizabeth said, even around the mentorship from agencies that do it really well. So I don't know that we'll ever get to where we were, but I think what we can do perhaps is just increase the knowledge about what the opportunities are. Um, but I think all the things we've talked about are, are going to significantly impact our ability to ever see in the next few years, anyway, the volunteer numbers to where they may have been a decade ago or even more. Has a, oh, you done Natalie? Sorry.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, I was just going to comment for what it's worth. I prefer Natalie, so thank you for using my name. That's all I have, man.
And then I want to move on to the next one, so.
Well, I bet it's almost where you are. I mean, we can talk volunteer all day. But the, the point I think that you just finished making was where were we before and why was that so much better than where we are today? I think our volunteer opportunities have escalated a lot. It's just more out there. And then the, the, the social pressures within the family home make it a lot more difficult to volunteer. So are we really doing a bad job when one in four actually volunteer? I'm, I'm not sure we should beat ourselves up over that. You know, yeah, we got the things that we could improve, but that's still thousands of volunteers in St. Albert alone.
That's a good.
I, I, I just don't want to lose that perspective.
Thank you. That's good way to end that one, yeah. Right, let's move on to the one, third one, I think, or fourth. Okay, community connectedness. Um, so engage with residents to foster connected community for everyone. So again, this is our sense of belonging, a community that prioritizes connection. We'll build a network of people with a shared interest that creates a feeling of belonging, welcoming and support. When people feel like they belong in communities and neighborhoods, they feel accepted, safe, connected. So again, some of the things we do are create, facilitate and promote opportunities for residents to stay connected. Things like our block parties, play streets, um, the Good Neighbor Day event that just occurred, the Neighborhood Connectors Group. So those types of opportunities in our community. We work to raise awareness and promote community group initiatives and events that bring residents together. So that very much ties into the previous area we just talked about as well. Enable the advancement of community connectedness through, um, built forms. So things such as urban design, development planning, capital projects. We find that we at FCS are being invited more and more to those tables to talk about what that community connectedness piece looks like, where historically we haven't been. So I think there's an amazing work within the city in that area and the opportunities being provided to enhance that.
Moving on to community safety, why is this important? The needs assessment survey by safe neighborhoods and personal safety is important. Promoting crime prevention helps to increase trust and safety. Neighbors who look out for one another create a natural surveillance system, fostering a safer environment and helping residents to feel safe and more secure in their community. This includes promoting community-based safety programs such as Neighborhood Watch, Citizens Patrol and other policing crime prevention initiatives. Supporting partners and collaborative collaborators in developing property crime prevention programs, including residential and commercial properties. And promoting crime prevention through environmental design, through the review of development plans and design elements that positively influences human behavior through natural surveillance, natural access control, territorial reinforcement, activity support and maintenance. So what does this mean to council? This work supports the policing committee's priorities in crime prevention, mental health in vulnerable communities and domestic violence and assaults.
Is that what, is that, uh, I noticed when I was reading the background report, I mean, you identified some of the linkages to some of the current council committees, um, but I didn't see it an actual link, and maybe it's just implied inside the actual initiative. But was there an actual link to more engagement with the policing committee? Because I saw it identified going forward, you're going to be connecting with all of the other committees, like Community Service Advisory, maybe, and, and the Youth Advisory and the seniors. But you didn't specifically identify policing committee in the report. So I just, I mean, it, maybe it's implied, but I, it wasn't in the background.
Oh, that's a good point, and I don't know that it's implied. Um, I think there's some opportunities there.
Yeah, okay. Just I wanted to raise that.
Family and gender-based violence. So, Kim, provide preventive strategies, education and support to eradicate family violence and gender-based violence and engage and educate our community. Because again, the, um, remembering that we can only impact this area sort of on that prevention end of the strategies. Why is it important? Family Violence Supports is one of the top social services that service providers have to refer clients to resources outside of St. Albert for adequate and timely access. Addressing family and sexual violence across one's lifespan is a current prevention priority, again, within that provincial framework that we've referred to. And an estimated one point eight million Albertans have experienced sexual violence in their lifetime, almost one in every two people at some point in their life. So addressing domestic violence is a priority for St. Albert. A domestic violence task force has been created to help understand and address increased domestic violence incidences in the community. And we are working on establishing a community-wide education, or like throughout the year to de-stigmatize gender-based violence and communicate existing supports and resources. Um, again, you're, you're mentioned, Counselor McKay of the Policing Committee and the ability to work stronger there. The Domestic Violence Protocol that the city has recently adopted and put into place and offered training is again, is a huge step, um, for having something like that within our Violence Protocol is, I think, a pretty big deal. Um, there's lots of increased opportunities in the community around access to counseling for sexual violence in St. Albert as opposed to having to travel great distances in order to do that. And again, increasing the number of folks that we have at our working tables that may not necessarily be um, located in St. Albert, but provide services to to families in St. Albert.
Question was, that, does this, uh, capture things like online bullying? Because that seems to be a very prevalent or not there, more prevalent thing that we hear about, but whether gender-based or whatever type, the, the does that
Not specific.
Included in, in this or?
Not in this area specifically, no, no, this is, this area is m- more about the family violence or gender-based violence that happens in homes, in dating relationships, in person. So there's an element that threads through it for sure. Um, especially if some of that family violence is based online in terms of some of the threatening and coerciveness, et cetera. So it, it threads through it. But I wouldn't say it's a specific, um, separate box, if that makes any sense.
I, I'm kind of wondering where that, that is going to come up.
Yeah, and it does thread through for sure. Go ahead, yep.
So I mean, maybe it's a general question and then a tie-in. So outline any of the changes around FCSS funding? Uh, maybe it could, maybe it could come later, I don't know. But how are the programming? Because I mean, I know there were some changes, but we, the funding hasn't increased other than really minutely in relation to the changes in the province, numbers plus also programming, you know, I mean, because I know the government of Alberta used to fund specifically um, family and gender-based violence programming. Is that, is that diminished, improved, delete? Do we know?
So I, I'll start and then maybe can, um, Safe, who we still fund, still offers the family violence programming, the new directions. Oh, what's the name of the other one? It just left my head. Yep, yep. There's two of them. Um, so they still definitely do offer those. Some of our, um,
Is that FCSS funded?
That, eh, no, the education awareness piece is funded through FCSS. Again, there's that fine line as to what we can fund and what we can't in terms of preventing family violence. So even when I talk about the increased access to sexual violence counseling or general counseling in our community, it's the, it's not FCSS money, it's city money, it's over contributions. So where we have increased some of our stuff is when you last year approved the, the position to become full-time, the Violence Coordinator position. So that's where we have been able to impact some of the work in our community around the prevention and education-based piece.
So, but the funding from the province, where are we on the, like, did it increase any in relation, just?
We got a very nominal increase a year ago. Um, with the new accountability framework, it in fact has gone trying to move the needle back to more primary prevention as opposed to opening it up. So that makes a difference too, right, in what funding can go towards in the future.
Because then it's not, it's not tailored to the, you got to tailor your program, right? More and more around that. What about the provincial, um, family violence funding or the domestic violence funding? Did they specifically? They, they used to have like a, an overarching program operated out of I can't remember the name of the ministry now, but is it?
There, there is still that envelope, that funding envelope. I think what we tend to see it go more towards is shelter.
Yeah.
First and stage, second shelter opportunities. So I think that's where the majority of that funding tends to go. There is some new work around provincial, um, networks that we are involved with around, but again, it's still more in that prevention realm in terms of how do we impact early on. So there's some best practices things, there's some, some new provincial tables that we will participate in, but it's still very much at that prevention and not, I think where you're talking about the funding for.
Well, yeah, for counseling.
Yeah.
And advocate, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I mean, so right now, the programming that we offer is, I mean, is, there's some pieces in relation to prevention, but in that that overage is how we're paying for the ongoing kind of counseling and that's important. And, and we still at a twenty percent mark area where we're over, do we have?
Approximately.
Yeah, so we're, we're over subscribe, overfunding it by twenty.
Yeah, yeah. So that's where we have that flexibility.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's us doing it.
Yeah.
And by us, it's about the city council funding, okay?
Yeah, correct.
Very well have to have a conversation sometime, as he's running out of room.
I think, yeah, one more thing. Oh, sorry, it's just, um, has there been any discussion about making this towards a regional approach, just for like, eh, any or all of these issues? Because like, I look at this and it's kind of siloed by community. And sometimes you have to lead the community to try to get resources because it's just, it's, it's not available or it's oversubscribed. And then once they have to leave the community, now it's like, no longer residents in Albert, it's not, we can't, it's difficult to get back into the community.
Yeah.
Um, and also some of these issues, just they, they go past borders, right?
Sure.
So, um, has there been any discussion about forming some kind of like regional cooperation in any areas where they don't, I realize that we are funding our communities and we want to deal with that, it's not residents, but there's also the opportunity to figure out how we can do more with specific areas that like Edmonton's doing that we're not doing and vice versa. Um, has there been any discussion on that?
The short answer is yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely. In terms of even some of the agencies and supports that sit at the St. Albert table are not St. Albert-based, but serve St. Albert community members, as well as I say, honestly, they're looking at it more from a provincial. So how do we provincially, knowing that people, as you say, family violence, gender-based violence really doesn't have borders. So how do we ensure that when we're providing supports to families that that support continues even when they step outside? So we've got a long ways to go, but yes, there's conversations happening for sure.
Yes, the other question I have is about awareness. So let's just say that you were feeling like you're a victim of just violence. Do we have anything on the website that says you know, are you in this situation? Here's where you can go for help.
We have an awesome page on the website with the save exit button. Um, we have a ton of resources. It's actually.
Are we promoting that like on social media at all? A lot?
Not as, yes, yes, certainly, especially during Family Violence Month. And then regularly throughout the calendar year, once in a while, we, we are able to promote.
I would just say that as this, like a jokey public resident, if I was looking, I still would not be fully aware of what to do. Like that's the challenge. Even in, not just here, anywhere.
Anywhere.
Like, yeah, where I go. And yeah, most people who, they just assume there's nothing. Yeah, I guess is the challenge, and so they're not even sure where to look.
Where to look. And, and as we promote in, in twenty twenty-five, I guess, twenty twenty, oh, my. The Community Social Needs Assessment twenty twenty-five, that will actually give us another opportunity to talk about, so this is an identified area of need in our community, and did you know? Um, so we'll have more opportunities for that in twenty-five as well.
I mean, a lot of these are impossible challenges.
You don't know.
What, what we can do is just tip away the best we can.
Yeah, you don't know what you need, what you don't know till you need to know it.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's just another comment. They're not going to go away. I've been dealing in domestic violence, gender-based violence since nineteen seventy-nine. Nineteen oh-four, no, that's empty. But, I mean, they're not gonna.
You saw her there, you're a different person.
I was a totally different younger person. But the, I mean, you know, that doesn't mean we, we. That was a totally different younger person. But the, I mean, you know, that doesn't mean we, we shouldn't be talking with it, it's just, it's just a comment on.
Yes.
Is that it's intergenerational and trauma and.
It's an unfortunate reality.
It's, 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 it's a, it's relationships. I mean, and I'm not simplifying it, I'm just trying to say we've been trying to address this institutionally for.
I, I don't feel bad Debbie, he, his mind is going, he sees a lot of so, just remembers from nineteen oh four and it's a hot one, I'll watch.
Just quick to, to make our short answer longer, just around the regional approach and that this is not a new issue, and I think this speaks to all of these priorities, is there's a reason that we are continuing to say, and this is a true part of the FCSS accountability framework, because these are provincial issues that we are seeing here, it is happening in every community. And when we talk about regional collaboration and how we work together to do this better and deliver it more effectively and learn from each other. I always say that FCSS, they've been doing this since nineteen sixty-seven, sixty-eight. They have regional groups that meet on a regular basis, they have zones, they have cross-province meetings on a regular basis as well, where they share what is working in their community, what new programs have been introduced, what the outcomes have been, what the like that was a complete fail, please don't try that in your community, like they, they share those misses as well, and that is ingrained in their work constantly. Um, there isn't a day where someone within the department isn't speaking to somebody from another FCSS across this province.
Okay. Housing and homelessness, so why is this important? Homelessness and housing insecurity is a current prevention priority, again, within the Alberta's Family and Community Support Services Accountability Framework. And back to what Elizabeth was saying, by including all of these that we wouldn't typically looked at prevention, housing and homelessness and gender-based violence. By including them now in the accountability framework, it's almost of, of forcing everybody to work regionally together. Because we're not going to move the needle unless we start doing things a bit differently. Increased rates of homelessness have been associated with unaffordability of accessing housing. Housing instability increases the risk of substance abuse and family violence. Housing unaffordability identified by residents and stakeholders as being important social issues to address. Research tells us, evidence shows that people are better able to break the cycle of homelessness when provided with housing and appropriate supports. People who are homeless are more likely to have mental health issues compared to the general population. So in this St. Albert context, in twenty twenty-three, one hundred and thirty-three unique individuals were identified as being homeless, homeless, reported by our food bank. And in twenty twenty-four, twenty-one unique homeless persons were enumerated for the twenty twenty-four municipal census. And so what does this mean to the, to council and the community, um, the mayor's task force to end homelessness? Um, and then the next presentation that you'll see, which is the youth transitional housing feasibility study.
Just a question around those stats, uh, hundred and thirty-three in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, what was that number again?
It was just who were enumerated when they went out to do the census.
Yeah, what was?
Sorry, the number was twenty-one unique.
Okay.
We've never done a point in time count though, right?
We, we do work with the food bank to do the point in time.
How do you enumerate, setting with no address?
It's a point in time counter.
Go home to the valley.
So my question there was, is I do, like, heard a lot of people that homeless couch surfing, do we actually have a number that are living rough to mayor's point in the river valley?
So depending on the age, it's really difficult to get the numbers. So if you're looking at your younger population, those are typically the ones who say couch surf. Um, as you'll see in the next presentation, we counted over, at one point, there could be over thirty youth which were able to count, and that's not the ones that are couch surfing. Um, for the adults, we're able to get numbers from the food bank because typically they're going to access the food bank. Um, almost always they're going to access food bank because they've got the showers, they've got the food, but, um, supports and services, so. The numbers vary, are, they, they, they're variable, depending also on the time of year. In the winter, our numbers go down because we don't have support, services, shelters, places for people to go and be, so.
Okay, thanks.
Very difficult to get those numbers.
When you were doing some of the work on this and talking to our community. It's, it's awesome that three members are identifying this. What's the appetite for shelter? Not transitional home, but like overnight shelter in, in the city, do, do you get a sense?
So we haven't asked that question, general public. We did try to drive general public when we were doing the transitional housing study, we tried, we tried to drive people to the website to see the report. I think we have to start with education, right? We have to educate the community. We're going to get not in my backyard. We are going to get not in our backyard. So what are some other options? I know that, um, there's a motel in the city of St. Albert, that there's organizations that have looked at and would love to open up as a shelter, which aren't embedded in, in neighborhoods close to homes.
We changed our land use power to allow for it, did we not?
It's going to be changed this year.
Didn't we do something a couple of years ago, Adrian? No, it was for shelter space, it was maybe, yeah, I remember that. Because I remember we were talking Salvation Army.
So right?
I feel like people are okay with shelters, as long as it's not their. Like they're, they're, they're empathetic and caring and want to take care of it, until it pops up in the backyard.
You know, it's really interesting when you talk to the Jessica Martel Foundation in Moreyville, because they had so much outcry when they were building the facility. Um, and then the second one, and so in the end, what's happened is all of the people in the surrounding area that were not in my backyard, getting, you know, very vocal, are now the ones that are coming and bringing donations and um, it's had such a positive effect in that neighborhood. Um, it's, it's very interesting to hear how, how much it changed and, and the same people that were saying not in my backyard. So education is a big piece, right?
Okay, inclusion, diversity, equity and accessibility, or IDEA. Residents feel welcomed, included, are treated as equals and live in a community where diversity is valued. So again, importance fostering a sense of belonging and promoting a sense of inclusion are current prevention strategies in the Alberta Family Community Support Services Framework. Based on our social needs assessment, we have certainly learned that not everyone feels welcome, safe and included in our community. Especially those who identify as two S L G B T Q I A plus, racialized or living with a disability. Various forms of discrimination are, have been identified in our community, including racism, homophobia, transphobia, ableism, among others. Further and related, we heard that calls for meaningful reconciliation for Indigenous people is needed to address discrimination in our community. What this means to council, um, the city of St. Albert believes in the advancement of a fair and equitable society that promotes respect for all citizens. strengthens the community, reduces causes of disadvantage and inequity and ensures that all citizens in St. Albert thrive and enjoy the best quality of life possible. One of the two primary ways that I think we're seeing an impact or some work in this area for the city is the internal idea work that's underway with our H R partner and FCSS is also at that table. And when we replaced a community development coordinator position that left our office and we hired a, so it wasn't a newly created position, but replaced that position. We hired someone to focus on inclusion, diversity, equity and accessibility. So we have a community development coordinator that's focusing entirely on that on a community-based level now, as well as the work that's happening in the community. And she just started with us in the spring and has been out in the community meeting with lots of different folks and working with city partners as well.
Mental health and addictions, this is always a top issue when you have social issues and surveys. So it's also a current prevention priority within the government of Alberta's Family and Community Support Services Accountability Framework. Residents and stakeholders identify mental health as being one of the top social issues. Stakeholders identify that they need to refer clients and resources outside of St. Albert for adequate and timely access to supports. Mental health and addictions were identified as top issues by those who are homeless in our community. And did you know that we offer mental health first aid and safe talk for the corporation and community? We have a community resource coordinator who works with schools in St. Albert to offer classroom workshops to promote a variety of different topics on wellbeing and positive mental health for school-aged children in St. Albert. Last year's sessions included a five-part series on different aspects of mental health and standalone sessions, including social skills and partnership. In two thousand twenty-three, we had a hundred and fourteen mental health sessions that were presented to over two thousand five hundred students. Last year, our family school liaison councillor and community support workers had nine hundred and sixteen client meetings assisting residents. And through our short-term contracted counselling, fifty-nine residents received four hundred and thirty-six sessions in two thousand twenty-two. Well utilized.
Okay. Last but not least, in our list of ten, Albany, so Jen and I will share this one. Basic needs of residents are met is sort of that goal area. Why important? Poverty, affordability, food security, accessibility, public transit and economic uncertainty are social issues that were all identified by our community's social needs assessment. Excuse me, as important issues to address in St. Albert. Poverty has both a financial and a social cost to communities and individuals. In twenty twenty-three, community agencies and networks coordinated efforts to ensure that supports related to housing, transportation, food and clothing were available to those most in need. St. Albert's twenty twenty-three living wage was calculated to be twenty-three dollars and eighty cents an hour. With record-high inflation and with the pandemic effects still lingering, the sheds a light on the reality of the cost of living in St. Albert, but also across Alberta. A living wage reflects what earners need to bring home to be financially self-sustaining based on the actual cost of living in the specific community. So this is a formula we work on with the Alberta Living Wage Network in terms of daycare costs, housing costs, food costs, et cetera. Um, and one of the things we work to do is to educate the community to educate the community on poverty and food insecurity, raise awareness of community resources that are available and how to access them.
We also provide coordinated navigation services so that residents are aware of the social and financial supports that are available to meet basic needs. Did you know that the city of St. Albert subsidy program assists low-income individuals and families in participating in the city's recreation facilities and programs and the local and commuter transit services? Our department provides the screening for this program and connects participants and other social supports that are needed. There has continued to be a significant increase in residents accessing the subsidy programs with numbers in two thousand twenty-two growing fifty percent to two thousand four hundred and seventy-eight residents in two thousand twenty-three. And almost two thousand residents have already accessed subsidy just for two thousand twenty-four.
Their crisis fund at? What's our crisis?
This fund, what's locked in there?
Well, we completed it and then we put a little bit more into it.
And how much is that? What's our?
We put ten thousand into it, we added.
We utilized that for the counselling services as well. And so we had some money through donations through T A M that we've been able to top up and can, can we to have that fund? So zero and then we're topping it up with other means.
Just, um, one, one of the things that can be helpful is to know if people are moving, who are, who have poverty issues in this number, or they're here and they develop poverty issues, right, like that's one thing I don't know is the longevity of the people that are here before were included in that category.
Or moving out.
Yeah, and then not captured. That's what I don't, because with, with inflation, there could be people that now have moved into that threshold. But then I just don't know how people are just suddenly moving to the area and then move this number and then now fall into a financial not that either one is like worse, but I just, I don't, something that we could understand. Or migration idea?
Right, yeah. Well, and with the subsidy program, we see a lot of newcomers accessing the program that fall in that low-income category.
Yeah, this is kind of, you know, in, in this area, but also the area. For, for the folks living rough, I know the Community Village did a great job of getting them into hotels when it was, you know, minus forty or plus forty. Um, is that funding kind of coming from the city or how, how does that work?
So that funding has been twofold, one again, um, through donations that we received that we have a fund, so we access that. And then also the Community Village gets R D N, um, funding. Um, so the two, the two programs split cost that and or if one runs out, the other one utilizes.
R D N funding?
R D N funding.
Is that stand for?
Sorry?
Is that stand for?
World Development Network.
Salvation Army as well. Right, and they put in so many.
And I, I guess for that fund, do we have anything, I know city council always gets questions from concerned residents when it gets really cold or really hot about this, that issue. Do we have kind of somewhere clear to send you know, those concerned residents be like, hey, if you want to support this, please donate, this is where the money goes to? Is that something that we're encouraging?
We didn't do that, but the T A N one hundred men, that's how that, um, thought was provided to the city to support our, our residents, um, was through a similar campaign so people could donate for I mean, people donate for many reasons for that, to that campaign, the ones that are in that membership. Um, but that's why that was given to the city so that we could help residents. That are vulnerable residents, it's through donation.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Just a comment, um, I don't know who put on the poverty simulation, I'm assuming it was you. Eye-opening experience, I, I, you know, I'd love to see a lot more of our community go through such. So my question is, is that it says five point five percent of St. Albert households are living in poverty. Do we have a breakdown? Like how many seniors that is versus, like, my simulation had a family, right? And so kids and transportation and all of that contributed to that. But seniors have their own sort of difficulties that contribute to theirs. I'm just wondering if you have a breakdown of, of how that plays out, that five point five percent.
The only way that we get a breakdown on the numbers is when the Community Village provides us the numbers, they can also give us the age breakdown on all of them. Yeah.
Just be interesting to know. So we got twenty percent of our people in St. Albert over sixty-five, what percentage of that live in poverty?
Our census information have that breakdown, is there? So I, I'm trying to remember, I filled it out, but I'm trying to remember, I thought you'd asked income level and age, so maybe when we get the breakdown of that, that would, I think that will help, help us as well, you guys are doing.
Anyway, kudos to this, I really enjoyed it.
That was one, I will pass that on to your organic group. I was a teenager with two younger siblings. Self-to-school and my siblings. Councillor Bramaski.
Thank you, I just have a comment, you know, we have the calculation of twenty-three eighty per hour to live in St. Albert, that's, you know, essentially forty-nine thousand dollars a year, and if you have a senior just on C, CPP and old age pension, it's nowhere near half of that, or the same with the person on H. So what avenues of, of help are those people, you know, allowed nowadays? Because that's where a lot of the problems are coming up, they just don't have the means to function anymore.
So I think they would have access to all of the supports that we've sort of just been talking about in terms of it accessing the food bank if perhaps that their limited income is going to keeping a roof over their head. We do have certainly seniors that regularly access the food bank in order to keep food in their cupboards. They would also be eligible for some of the subsidies that Jen referred to in terms of transit and recreation use. Um, the Seniors Club also has supports for seniors, not financial supports, but would offer opportunities for them to be engaged in the community um, in a very, um, low-cost or no-cost way. So those would be some of the ones that immediately come to my mind.
Okay.
I'm not sure if that answers.
Is there any rental assistance?
The rental assistance. That funding is depleted. Um, they, we, we stretched it, weaned it for a good number of years, but they then did end up having to restrict intake because the folks that they were committed to were going to, would, would take all the funding and that funding has been depleted entirely. Because that was through a provincial grant in
Two thousand and eight.
I was gonna say two thousand eight, two thousand and nine, and we were able to sort of set some criteria that we made it last for a really long time in terms of working with really good exit strategies for folks. But there is no more funding for that, not locally.
That's, yeah, it's a sad situation for some people, certainly.
Absolutely is, yeah. Thank you. It's, um, it's eleven, I think we should wrap this up.
All right.
It's been awesome, but I know there's some next steps.
Implementation. So, City of St. Albert will facilitate the development of an implementation plan, I'll, I'll say that in consultation with our community stakeholders. Guiding principles of the implementation plan include a coordinated community approach. We're going to focus on avoiding and mitigating duplication, prioritizing easy and timely access to social supports and resources, and of course, tracking, monitoring, and reporting on progress made. As part of the plan, community services staff will continue to facilitate community working tables, networks, and promote community collaboratives and partnerships. As mentioned, ongoing education and promotional campaigns will aim to raise awareness of community social issues, what resources and social supports are available for residents and how to access them. Um, prior to the pandemic, we had annual community engagement stakeholder sessions, and so we will pick back that, pick that back up again. And we'll do every year have a, uh, an engagement session and try and look at the emerging issues, you know, progress, you know, that report on progress. And the idea is to make sure that the roadmap is relevant and responsive, moving forward.
So the next slide shows a listing of our community stakeholders, and the, this list is, um, inclusive of the folks that we work with every day and, and make a difference in this community because of the, St. Albert is so well-known in Alberta as the best community to work in for regional and local and partnerships and collaboration. So kudos to the City of St. Albert. And the next, uh, slide that you'll see is indicative of some of the working tables and committees that all of the staff and again, all of those community partners work together on. And I'm really trying to go quickly, so stop me if you have a question. And lastly, um, where do we go from here? So we're here today to share the information with you. Um, we will bring our stakeholders together and start to look at those tables and what do we need to do different, if anything, and continue to do the great work that we're doing. Um, annually, we do our community stakeholder engagement sessions and we'll continue to do that. And our lovely Debbie, who was the one who made this whole project happen, um, will track and monitor and keep us going through implementation and that's our slide.
Are you looking at, so are we getting like an annual update on this?
We would sort of. On annual updates.
I think as part of the overall F C S, or sorry, Community Services annual reporting. Is there a, sorry, is there a dashboard or is there a way of monitoring progress or tying in to any other stuff? Is it possible to even create one? Look at it, but I would offer that. Yeah. It'd probably be a resource. Yeah, oh, yeah, it's probably gonna be a resource issue, and I think it's one of the things I, I, I mean, I, I could have saved this for, if we're gonna have any comment or debate, but I, I guess.
There's no motion, so.
No motion, so I mean, when we're presenting this, you could almost put this on a Venn diagram. Every, uh, every hand of these things touch and they really focus on it. So I mean, it's, it's not like you mentioned, Linda, I think there's no priority, no stratification, but it's a Venn diagram. I mean, one causes another, one leads to another, one builds on another, one helps you um, move out of it. Um, it would be an interesting exercise.
Certainly all linked.
Venn it out, but I mean, but it's all, it's fantastic work and congratulations, Debbie, even though he bad mouthed her.
There is no motion on this, but is it the same crew doing the youth transitional home?
Oh, no.
Okay, all right, so let's, uh, let's take a few minutes break.
Yes, people for that word.
Let's be back in our chairs at ten after eleven.
Make a closing comment here quickly. Uh, Connie, you mentioned that St. Albert is recognized in the region and outside of the region as kind of having a, an enviable position. Which, which I think all of council recognizes, but I'd also like to say that it's not, it doesn't happen just because it happens, it happens because of you and your team here today and the ones that are back in the office still doing the work. So, um, in that we're recognized within the region, it really means the team here today is being recognized as well. So, um, thank you for all the work you have done in the past, uh, at all levels, community, neighborhood, food bank, community village, et cetera, et cetera. It's so important, um, and, and that's why we're recognized. It's, it's not a thing, it's people, everyone, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, ten after eleven, we'll be back in our chairs.
Mayor, I'm here just eating, so that's when my camera's off.
So let's get started. Um, this is the exciting topic of the day. Sorry, what page? Page sixty-six of our agenda package, and Elizabeth, are you introducing it?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to just take the opportunity to open this one and, and acknowledge, like, I feel like the urgency that we feel at times when it comes to addressing a growing need as we're more visibly seeing individuals experiencing, um, that houselessness, uh, like in our, in our community and in surrounding areas. And, um, I think because this work impacts not only our vulnerable populations, but like the youngest members of our community, I think that, that makes it closer to our hearts and it, and it also makes it harder to navigate it. Um, I do think that there's, there's a bit of an elephant in the room as we work through this and, and, and look at this complex work, because we, who's financially responsible? Who, who, who needs to own this work? Who needs to make this happen? Um, and, and I think we've been struggling with and continue to struggle with, with those sort of like, whose, whose is this? What level of government, uh, what parts of our community means issue is this? Um, and, and we see it every time you turn on the news that there are many other municipalities that are also trying to, to navigate that, that gray area where we try to balance what's long-term fiscal responsibility is and how we get much further upstream of this issue while we're also responding to, um, you know, individuals that are in crisis and, and the scope of the work is constantly changing. What's contributing to why, um, these young people or why anyone is experiencing um, houselessness, um, it's changing. Which programs and funding sources are available is changing constantly. And I would say, you know, as we entered into this feasibility study, um, my newness within this world, um, became painfully apparent to me um, because I really, I really wanted this space to report, um, to be like such a clear and actionable path forward that we could just, we could just make decisions. We could just hand it over to, you know, another entity that just wanna give us money and, uh, and help those, those in our community, um, with a quick and effective and sustainable solution, um, that we would turn over a rock that no one else had turned over before, that would, uh, you know, disclose some untapped opportunities. Um, and that we would unlock how to get to that next step with, with the least amount of, um, pain and stress and maybe frustration. Uh, that, that is not what has happened. I, I would love, I would love it if it was, but that's not what happened. But what has happened as a result of the work through the second phase, um, is that we know there are operators that are super interested in doing this work. We know that there are, uh, social-serving organizations that absolutely wanna collaborate on the pieces that wrap around traditional housing. Um, and we know that we have regional partners, um, in the neighboring municipalities that are also navigating this same issue, um, and are very interested on what collaboratively we could do to address, uh, transitional housing specifically for this, this youth population. And those conversations had happened previously, but not in the like, no, we're ready to jump in, we're ready to figure this out. And so that is an exciting outcome of, of this phase two work. Um, we have worked so closely with planning and development, so we're just so appreciative for Lori Scott's, um, contribution to this work. And also just want to acknowledge that, uh, Christina Peter, Director of Planning and Development, is, uh, online. If there is any questions throughout this presentation that could be better addressed from a planning and development perspective. Um, my colleagues, uh, Connie Smigelski and Vlad Rubin are here today for the presentation. Um, just as a kickoff to today's report, um, beyond my personal feelings, uh, uh, about where we're at. Um, this feasibility study was completed in June. And as I, as I mentioned, there was lots of conversations and collaborative work that happened um, to, to work with potential partners that had been identified in phase one, um, to get more of an understanding of what to development and operational models might work here in St. Albert. Um, to sort of, uh, refine and test and analyze those scenarios. Um, and the report is used as, as our jumping off points. Um, but there's lots of data still within it that wasn't validated. Um, but, but that we can use to really, um, engage in the conversation in a different way than we have previously.
So investing in early intervention, structural changes, prevention and support significantly reduces youth homelessness, the need for crisis response, and any associated costs. Implementing an integrated approach that combines these strategies can prevent youth from becoming precariously housed and homeless and provide swift support to those who do, ultimately saving money and resources in the long run. This slide, um, speaks more around the upstream, the downstream, and, and that social return on investment, again, investing early. So upstream measures are generally more cost-effective. For example, the programs and services in schools, um, services like we do through F C S S as they prevent the escalation of issues that require the more intensive and expensive downstream responses. Effective upstream strategies reduce the likelihood of youth becoming homeless, thereby decreasing the demand for crisis interventions. Downstream is dedicated to providing immediate housing solutions for homeless youth as well as urgent medical and mental health services to promote the end goal of stable, long-term housing. Downstream interventions are resource-intensive and very costly. as the address immediate and often severe needs include many diverse strategies and professionals involved. And that would be things like your shelters. So you need them. They're a Band-Aid approach. We can't move the needle if we only invest our money in shelters. Addressing the root causes of youth homelessness through targeted supports and programs often integrated within housing solutions significantly increases the chances of successful interventions while simultaneously reducing the financial burden on society. Possible social return on investment is not our focus here. However, similar projects range from a four dollar and thirty-six cents to eleven dollars and sixty cents on every dollar invested in social and economic value by investing in, in homeless strategies. This report highlighted an integrated approach to preventing youth homelessness as crucial and most efficient because it addresses complex factors, ensuring comprehensive and sustainable support through at-risk youth. So as we, when we presented in the first phase, when we really did focus a lot on the social supports, it's imperative that you have the social supports and services alongside the housing for, for success. The viability of developing a youth housing program in St. Albert depends on several elements converging and ensures the project's long-term success and its impact. These considerations assess the project's ability to meet its objectives through building partnerships and driving the project further, obtaining suitable locations and zoned sites, selecting experienced operators, securing funding and addressing potential risks and/or challenges. There is a need for youth transitional and youth crisis housing in St. Albert and throughout Edmonton and area region. Gathering neighboring municipalities, including Sturgeon County, Fort Saskatchewan, Spruce Grove could garner a regional opportunity or approach.
Want to ask to interrupt too, just like?
Absolutely you could.
Just on your last comment. I know that would work in relation to funding and operating dollars. But then in, let's say he didn't have it here, but let's say we had it in Spruce Grove or another. Again, you're, you're taking a young person away from a base and moving him in to another community to access those services. So you kind of, it's, I mean, it's not a lot different other than you have the supports problem and then you did.
Yeah.
So I mean, yeah, I just wonder how, why, I mean, yes, from an operation standpoint, it works, but from a treatment perspective, I don't think it works if we move them out of our community.
I think one of the ways you could make it successful is ensuring that there's transportation throughout the day and evening as needed so that you're transporting them, A, back to home, kind of back in the old social work days where you would take the kids home and visit the family in the evening. I think it's really important to put in those kinds of supports. The thing with transitional housing that's so incredibly difficult is it's not funded by governments, by federal or provincial governments. And so you need to come up with differing grants, donations, all kinds of funding. It makes it really difficult to start.
We'll, we'll fund treatment or shelters, you know, fund halfway homes.
Yep.
And they'll fund kids in care, but they won't fund transition. Yeah.
Okay. And so one of the things we've been doing with our government relations department is, is the need for that advocacy because there has to be the governments have to start looking at, at youth. We're not going to change the trajectory of this, of what we're seeing in our world unless we can start from the youngest stage. So.
That's always my frustration because I'll meet with Minister X, you know, housing and they'll say, this is a youth issue. So then you meet with Minister, what was Cyril? And he's saying, no, this is a housing issue.
And how it just retains that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is precise.
Yeah, for sure.
Any more questions? So multiple sites were assessed for suitability. Youth transi-, youth transitional housing has its own very unique features that are important for its future success. Key location considerations for, for transitional housing involves evaluating potential locations based on accessibility to essential services, community integration, transportation, safety, zoning compliance and cost feasibility. Additionally, considerations may include the site's environmental safety, infrastructure availability and potential for future expansion to ensure long-term viability. From previous report estimates, the need ranges from less than a dozen youth and or young adults to over thirty individuals who are facing homelessness in our community. And that was taken almost a year ago. So those numbers could definitely have changed. Our final report highlights identifying an experienced operator at a very early stage through this. And this information serves as the basis for the following housing models to be considered. Conceptual space requirements for youth housing programs were developed for this study to support financial and operational modeling. Assumptions for ten and sixteen-bed facilities are based on land use regulations and existing comparable youth housing programs. The feasibility study evaluated three different options, each varying in scale, number of use they could accommodate. The first being the opportunity to just purchase a home and redevelop it into a housing facility, to build a new ten-bed youth housing facility and/or to bed, to build a new sixteen-bed youth housing facility. These decisions will be made based on an operator because we have always said that the city isn't wanting to operate this kind of housing. So based on the organization's operator experience and further learnings from other youth housing providers, a large purpose-built facility with ten to sixteen beds was identified as a preferred approach.
The critical path is the sequence of steps necessary for advancing the project. The critical path for converting an existing house is estimated to be an eight to twenty-four months project from initiation to occupancy. The critical path focuses on identifying key milestones and deadlines essential for the project's successful completion, including renovations, securing funding and obtaining necessary permits. This strategic approach ensures that each phase of development is aligned with project goals and timelines, minimizing minimizing delays and ensuring timely delivery on housing units. The critical path for the new purpose-built youth housing in St. Albert is estimated to be a three to five-year project from initiation to occupancy. Range of operating funding varies. The findings underscore the difficulty in maintaining consistent financial backing, the real challenge lies in ensuring sustained operating funding. This ongoing support is critical if these services often require significant subsidization to remain viable and effective in meeting the needs of the community. Funding available ranges between ten thousand, hundred and seventy, seventy-five thousand. Again, the city would have support and application process by an operator. These are the examples of potential capital funding that could be available to an operator. Availability can be changed over time. Currently available funding ranges from ten thousand to up to ninety percent of capital cost. The city would support an application.
The first slide that Vlad was referring to is here, lists some of the operating funding that could be available.
The purpose of this slide is to show that, that there is no ideal model that serves all. Youth housing projects comparison in Alberta. Camrose, eighteen beds, operating budget is one point five million, twelve youth estimated. Capital budget is two point five million. Cold Lake, twenty-seven beds, operating budget is three hundred and sixty thousand, capital budget is thirty-six million, and that's the highest in the province. We exclude Edmonton and Calgary. Grand Prairie, emergency shelter, transitional housing, eleven bachelor suites, youth hub, twenty-four altogether. Operating budget, two million, capital budget is five point two million. Medicine Head.
Grand Prairie operates one facility that works with shelter and transitional housing.
They have both. And then in the basement, they have the youth hub that they funded for. That's that kicks down funding.
Do they get access to any operating budget? Because they have a shelter?
You, what you can get for funding is children's services for, you can get three or four beds. And so that's one of the provincial government fundings you can get. You have to keep those beds available. So you can't fill them. So if nobody's in there, you're not getting the money.
Good.
So that's the downfall, but I think every facility that we've seen that has transitional housing for youth has got some beds dedicated for children.
Medicine Head, one bed per bedroom, a four-bed shelter with two single bathrooms, operating budget one point two million. Capital budget was not available. Red Deer, twelve beds, operating budget eight hundred seventy-five thousand. Shelter is a part of larger youth HQ organization. And Fort McMurray, seven beds, operating budget varies between five hundred and fifty thousand to seven hundred and capital budget is not available. It's over.
I interrupted you, Vlad. I apologize. Did you guys visit these or did you just make the phone calls?
So we conducted the research. We contacted all together. There are seventeen cities in Alberta and I have to highlight that some cities are fifteen thousand population or sixteen, while some towns can be thirty thousand plus. So we conducted this research on all the more or less big places and all of them stated that youth housing is a critical need. Yes, we are interested and we want to know more about this.
But you didn't just go out and examine these locally?
Grand Prairie, I was out. I had to go to a conference and I went really because I needed to see the facility. We were going to go to Camrose this summer and unfortunately they're on hold. They're not shut down, but the facility's on hold. They're reviewing policies. Yeah. So that's the only one that I've been able to see, other than the ones that we visited in Edmonton with our consultant.
I've been to many. Then the Cold Lake, why is it thirty-six million?
Yeah, that's huge. So.
They're over the airport space.
The, the Cold Lake is very, very tiny place, but the need is big because, yeah, it's surrounded by the reserves. And they are actually expanding and growing. So their, the expected number will be fifty-plus beds soon.
I don't want to put too fine a point on it, but we were struck when, when we had the discussion with the team that with the possible exception of Camrose, all of these are hubs in their own right. Yeah. Right. Whereas we are sitting on the edge of a hub.
Yeah.
If you wanted to look at that bottom line. So, you know, I don't think it's got necessarily a huge material impact, but there are some implications in terms of funding streams, the support networks holistically. Right. And so you, to Vlad's point, Cold Lake is the hub of that area. Thirty-six million.
I know, it's crazy.
I, I want to necessarily ask you to tell us now, because I don't know if you can, but why Camrose is being halted or what policies are, what's, it's a pretty big deal to put it on pause. So I'm not quite sure what led up to it. I'm not sure if you can discuss this publicly or not, or what? Do you want to share?
Sure. So we had a conversation with with the Camrose. That was Open Door by Ellen Garcia. So operation halted in November twenty twenty-three. We cannot disclose the reasons, but we can project that for, for the future youth, youth housing. So we will, we will make it better for sure.
So part of, part of it, and again, not going into detail, but a lot of it was around policy and procedure review and updating and getting things probably just a little more precise to be able to deal with situations as they arose. And so I think one of the learnings for us and anybody else in this is not to go too quickly and to make sure, like you do with any new business, make sure your eyes are dotted and your teeth are crossed. And Camrose, I believe, built fairly quickly. I know that that was a problem. It's been a big problem and nowhere to go in that area. And so that could be also a piece of it.
Even if it's not disclosed publicly, I think it's just something that we definitely need to do. Like what we need to learn from, from this one.
Yeah.
It's been for a year and we're into September right now. So.
One of the great things that we've been able to do and, and Vlad, in the work that he's done over this past year is establish those relationships. So meeting with all of these more communities that are having housing, willing to share budgets, willing to have those conversations, willing to share policies, lessons learned, how to do things differently. So we do have that and that's things we can share with an operator. Should we get to that point that we're going to go down that road?
Um, Councillor Minsky has a quick question too.
Thank you. Just in regard to the number of beds, it was mentioned, you know, in your last count that there could be anywhere from ten to thirty individuals. So say it is ten and you do the, you know, the bigger shelter, is the intent to provide service for surrounding areas when you have the open space?
You know, that's an interesting question. And I know I've talked a lot with Jessica Martel Foundation who, when they opened in Moreenville, their primary funding is Moreenville and St. Albert. And when you open something, people are going to come. It's inevitable. But what they do is they have designated almost a timeframe that you have until they'll fill the bed from the regions that fund them and then open it up to the others. And so there, there again, are operators in our region that we can learn from because that always will happen. Councillor Minsky, you build it, they will come and they will come from everywhere because they're, especially for you transitional housing, there's so little of it in, in the area and the region.
And my other question is focusing on youth, you know, youth in your definitions. I've seen up to nineteen, up to twenty-four, up to twenty-five, when they're like twenty-five and a half or one month after twenty-five, where do these people go? Like, why are we not just focusing on, on servicing people in need rather than, than extending the age of youth, so to speak?
Yeah. So the youth age, actually, we try to follow the provincial age for youth because then the funding can follow for programs and services. It was recently just reduced. It was, it was at twenty-four for many, many years and was recently reduced to twenty-two. So we, we need to realign our, our youth and young adults to fifteen to twenty-two. But again, that lies, that lines up with funding for services and programs. The other thing to consider is when you're building housing, it's very difficult to put somebody that's young, that's fifteen or sixteen and with an older adult. And so you have to consider all of those things. Would it be ideal to have an apartment complex and bring everybody of every demographic? Wouldn't that just be the best news story?
I think Councillor Minsky, when we did the Mayor Fast Force, we identified there was a need at all ages. The best use of our dollars would be to focus on the youth, kind of a prevention model of chronic homelessness and and identify it as, as a, probably the bigger need in our community. Right?
Right. As long as the youth remain the most in need, which is kind of transitioning to other demographics now as well. So hard to say, I guess.
For sure.
Yeah, exactly.
But how do you change the needle? You know, and I say that, people get sick of me saying that, but how do you change the needle if you don't start at the earliest opportunity?
Yeah, sure.
So within the reports, you know, we hire consultants because they have experience and, and are able to, to put sort of those, that experience and learning to the, the, the task or the question that we're having them go through. And we're actually really quite fortunate here because not only was this phase two of the report validated around sort of what the recommendations are and what sort of preferred paths might be based on the consultant's experience doing a significant amount of this work through British Columbia, but also with all of the partners that were so willing to share their experience. But we also right now have a real-time learning happening here in the city with twenty-two St. Thomas. So a few of the things that we've identified are, are lessons that we could apply to this work based on twenty-two St. um twenty two Saint Thomas Street to date, um is that uh youth transitional housing may require the allocation of land um in order to address the need or for an operator to even consider doing this work. Um, that youth and young adult housing needs are different than adult housing needs. Um, that aligning the project with compatible zoning will um make it easier to navigate. Um, and that uh the co-location of some services and supports um does um um not only enhance sort of the, the attractiveness of the, the project, but like that potential success for it. Um, and then we also just recognize within sort of that youth transitional and, and that youth component that twenty two Saint Thomas could become um an enhanced affordable housing option for um youth residents in the future. Um, and that's a conversation that we um can continue to have um and, and further along with homeward housing.
So, based on the report and the identified needs, administration will investigate interest from operators or partners for the provision of youth transitional housing and provide an update to standing committee of the whole no later than Q two one twenty five, and that's how we could move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I know we were asking questions along the way, but does anyone have any general, Natalie, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I'm happy to make the motion, kind of.
So I have a question.
Go ahead, yep.
So I mean, the interest from operator or partners, partners uh would be like full funder, operator full funding model? Like you could potentially have a, a, an operator who wants to come in and say, we'll take it right from A right up to Z or Zed. Um, or you could have something that says, we're going to, we will operate because that's where our thesis is, but we just don't have the infrastructure and the ongoing costs, right? So, yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that's kind of clear, it's really, really wide open, right?
Yes.
It's, we're not really, this isn't like your RFP, it's more an ROI, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, I'm done.
I had a, I had a question, just.
Okay, hold on, Wes, then Mike, then Shelley.
It, 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 just to, I have no problem with motion, uh, but there's a um paragraph in, in the report that says uh gathering neighboring municipal municipalities, including Surjean County, Fort Saskatchewan and Spruce Grove could, I'm assuming that's Garner Regional Opportunity. What does that mean?
So if we weren't going to go forward with the motion that's sitting here, another option would be to start to have some regional conversations and look if there's a regional opportunity to build. So we may not be able to end up with transitional housing in Saint Albert, it would maybe be in Spruce Grove or Fort Saskatchewan um with beds secured for each region, so that's another option. Um, but how do we not, how do we move forward if, if this isn't an option, what other options are out there for us to move forward?
Okay. But well, for regional collaboration, uh it's, it's always easy, though, to say yes to a social issue, provided it's in some other municipality. Uh, like to see it here.
First, I mean, yeah.
Anyway, thanks for that, appreciate it.
Mike?
I just wanted to clarify that what we're going to be asking is to have the, the team move forward to look at who would operate this. But the capital assumptions are, we're going, going to keep that focus to the sixteen-bed scenario?
So we wouldn't determine that, I think that that has to be determined, be, be determined by an operator. So I think the next step is to put that interest out, see who's interested, see if they'd be interested. Maybe somebody's gonna come forward and they're only interested at looking at a rebuild of a house in a neighborhood. So um I wouldn't want to be prescriptive, I think keeping it wide open to see just if there's interest out there to come into Saint Albert and, and start. But our, the intent.
Maybe I missed, I think at the beginning, we said our preferred approach was, was the sixteen-bed solution, but we're not gonna just, it was that, did I hear that correct, I guess?
It's a, it's a preferred approach from all of the regional conversations we've had, because as soon as you build it, some of these smaller facilities have been um their bed, their beds are used right away and there's no room for growth. And so what we've learnt is if you're gonna build it, build it long enough to have some future viability as well.
So our preferred is sixteen, but when we go and look at an operator, we'll still leave it open?
Absolutely.
To get the best.
Absolutely.
Response.
Yeah.
And, and just at the top end of the building, the, the sixteen mil- or sixteen-bed facility, it was probably around five point five million to build, two million for land and one point eight or nine for operating was kind of what all of those charts kind of summarize.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, okay, that, good. Thanks, thanks for that clarification, I just wanted to understand what we were gonna go out there and, and clearly ask for, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, Shelley?
Thank you, um on the map that you provided, you did show sort of a point in an area of Saint Albert for a one, two, three choice. Uh, how did you come upon that area?
So when we were, when we had the consultants in Saint Albert, we worked with our planning and development department and just looked at sites, city-owned sites that are in Saint Albert, um we looked at quite a few sites and really honed down on the three that were um deemed probably the most accessible, easily usable for transit and all of those things that we spoke to around the viability of, of preferred locations. Um, and so those seem to be preferred location close to schools, so if you're looking at youth housing, those would be preferable options in the downtown core, closer to the downtown core.
Okay, so when you're looking for operators, you would be sort of promoting that area then?
Uh, we would be sharing our learnings, absolutely.
Okay, and then the other thing is you had mentioned that you dealt with many, you know, operators in doing your research for this report. Would you just do a deeper dive with those specific operators plus others? Or just open it up and not have further conversation with the ones you've already spoken with, or what's your plan in that direction?
Um, that's a great question, we haven't determined it exactly, but we absolutely would share it out with folks that we know there could be potential for interest and also share it out with folks who are um operating current facilities that might be interested in expanding. And, and then the sky is the limit and to have it open to, to whomever.
Okay, and the few that you mentioned that were closing down or changing from Edmonton, are those people looking for other locations or are they just not seeing a need in the exact area they were prior?
Oh, so, so sorry if you're referring to the Yes. So what they're doing is not closing down necessarily, they're changing the way that their model is. And so they solely, the model solely was on a shelter for youth, uh beds for youth. But what they've learned and why we focused so much, especially when we came with phase one report, why we focused so much on the supports and services and programs is of all the years that Yes has been in operation, and it's been many, in the eighties when I was a frontline social worker, I used to take kids there. So I don't know how long they've been in operation, but many, many, many. They haven't been able to, again, move the needle, change the trajectory. And so they know that having just a shelter, just housing without supports and services, you're not going to be able to move those young people towards a better path. So they're moved, they're changing their model, they'll still have a shelter beds, because we will always need shelter beds. Saint Albert will probably always need a couple of shelter beds. But their, their model is changing so that they're moving more into neighborhoods, being more neighborhood-based, so that people are closer to home. Um, and having the supports and services within um whatever that neighborhood-based facility looks like. And so the intent is, um if somebody comes in and needs support right away, is there a way to maybe get them back to stay with the neighbor? Is there a brother and a sister or an uncle or an aunt, as opposed to let's just put them in the house and tomorrow we'll see what we can do to help support them? It's, it's just looking at it completely different to try to prevent them from getting into that shelter bed in the first place.
Okay, would it be beneficial to have local and regional operators as part of your, the recommended motion here? Because if we're looking at operators or partners, we're just looking for specifically to come to Saint Albert then, right?
Well, you, you, sorry, maybe I'll jump in, so we'll have our, our holistic procurement process, right, that will inform this. We cannot arbitrarily pick a, a single operator, so the request for interest, you know, all, all those bits and pieces will be followed. Uh, and the team will ensure that we're compliant on that. So I, I would submit that, I think anybody who's kind of interested will have the opportunity to have those discussions. And then the team will be able to come back, council, if that, that is what you're driving at, I think, it'll be, it's not, there's no foregone conclusion here.
Okay, thank you, that's it, thanks.
I'm quick, final, um, it, Connie, do you have the budget to be able to do this? I know it was twenty twenty-two when we approved the initial hundred and thirty-two thousand and it, so today, to take it to this next step, do you have a budget to do that?
So I don't know that there, I, I don't know what the cost would be to put, go through that now request. Um, there's a little bit of money left in the initially approved funding, so there is a bit of money there. So thank you for the question, I, I'm not exactly sure how to answer it, because I don't know, I mean, if you've got ten million dollars, we could probably just build something right now.
I wanted, just to get us.
Yes.
Like a, we approved our motion.
Yeah.
For this work, we have enough money and we have the most important resource, we have an individual to do this.
That, that was mine.
Yes.
Okay.
I think that, that discussion in Q two of twenty twenty-five, right, that will then be also resource-based.
Okay, good.
Okay, come back. So you have these things, so donated and, and if I missed it, please forgive me, but you have donated and acquired. So do we actually think someone's gonna donate a whole house? Like, have we actually had people say, I'm willing to donate an entire four-bedroom house? Or is this like purely just speculation of that?
So I believe what you're seeing when the consultant was looking at those, they're, the donated piece is specifically speaking to the city. So if the city was to donate land, so, yeah.
But, but because it says four-bedroom donated, for example, with a conversion, so that.
Was donated land, so that, that means with donated land. So if they were to do a four-bedroom and the land is donated. That's my understanding of that.
We, because it's like, it says conversion, so that to me makes it sound like it's already there.
I don't think we've had anyone come forward and say, hey, we've got a house.
Okay, because I, I thought.
But it is an option.
It's an option, I guess.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, okay, so everything is just whether or not we use city or reacquired land and then we still develop.
Yeah, that's how that, a lot of that was, was developed, what you're seeing.
What you're seeing in, in Shireland Services anyways is you'll find a third party who will access the mon- they, they will buy the house and then convert it.
Right.
So Paul, um McMahon, uh all of them, they will, they would, they're, they're big uh service providers, and they will come in and buy a house as long as it conforms to the land use bylaws and, and then they will convert it. A lot of them in, will buy uh duplexes, so because you gotta realize you're dealing with both uh male and female and they'll
Yeah.
One side and.
Will that be good?
And or they'll have one side as a shelter, one side as a, as a.
Longer term?
Longer term.
Okay, I get that. So I appreciate how much detail you guys have put into the actual operating process and trying to think this through, because um up to this point, it's been very um I don't know, seventy thousand feet, so, yeah, so um certainly you have really tried to figure out what will be a realistic budget going forward, so I just wanted to acknowledge that, you know, these numbers that come out here are you might be lost in this, as far as we're not going to challenge them.
Yeah.
But I do appreciate what you actually went to that kind of detail to try to figure this out. So you're looking at probably a budget of about like, about what, about one point five million or so-ish is what I'm looking at, probably? I know that they had, you had like different numbers, but that's base, it's similar almost, no matter how many beds you have, really, it's not that big of a difference.
For sure. The larger facility you have, the lower your cost of bed ends up being, right?
Yeah, so it's kind of almost, because it's, you're gonna need the same amount of staffing. Pretty similar anyway, regardless of how many people you're helping. Okay, that's all I got.
Councilor Minsky?
I thought it should be mentioned that Eileen's house in Morneville was donated by a citizen and, you know, that's run with Jesse's house in coordination. So you never know, you know, put the call out there, there might be somebody in Saint Albert who wants to donate a house.
Yes.
We're building time.
We're building time.
Like, but in their, like, in their will, it might sound morbid, but it's like, you don't have children.
Sure.
Yeah, for sure.
As long as it's permanent.
Okay, Councilor Jolly, you wanted to make the motion?
Sure, so that administration investigate interest from operators or partners for the provision of youth transitional housing and provide an update to SCOW no later than Q two twenty twenty-five.
Awesome. This does not have to put council, it's just direct administrative.
Yeah, in the city bylaw, there's a section that gives on SCOW directly.
Yeah, so, perfect, okay. All right, I'll accept that motion, Councilor Jolly, do you have any opening comments?
Just, you know, really briefly, um when I think about the social roadmap discussion, I'm strongly aware that this project targets um many of the identified issues in that report, so related to youth, poverty, um inclusion, um accessibility and safety. Um, so this is an easy recommendation to support. Um, the hard, um, the hard decisions are gonna come when um we have to have courage in terms of um the NIMBY arguments. Um, they're gonna have to come when we hear um real budget implications. Um, and um, and I look forward to seeing those discussions happen in Saint Albert, um when they do.
Anyone else on debate?
Uh, just as a, I will.
Yeah.
Just as a, as a member of the original kind of homeless task force, and I, it's like, he, Councilor Hughes is right, I mean, now we're actually starting to look at some of them more the actual operating costs and some of the implications, not only as it relates to the administrative, but I look forward to actually finding out some of the, those costs that were not, that just aren't measurable, that are intangibles, that are going to actually um show that this is well worth the money that we invest in our youth today, because it's so much preventative and and as you've identified, or Vlad, you identified in the sense of preventative costs are always a fraction of what it will cost us in society in the long term, so um congratulations, it's somewhat exciting, it's, at the same time, it takes time. That's what's frustrating, because some of the youth that we probably could have been helping are now adults.
Yeah.
Anyways.
We're done? Anything to close, Councilor Jolly? Above the vote? That carries you, I hope so Councilor Minsky's vote. Okay, uh, carries unanimously. Hey, I saw some pizza arrive. So it's almost noon, so why don't we take a half hour break? Um, when you get back at twelve thirty, uh Councilor Killip's gonna share with the emergency management bylaw, let's give you.
Yep.
And then if someone could just text me when you get to the in-camera, I'll come back.
Firm with.
With.
Need four.
We got.
Yeah.
We got four.
Where we go, we have four.
We're going to reconvene, I believe. Mayor here is taking call right now, but she'll be back hopefully for the in camera item. We have Natalie back and councillor. Councillor Jolly back, councillor Vermont ski back, so we'll. And councillor Broadhead will be joining us short.
It's like like.
Turn it over on agenda items six point two to Mr Everett Cook for. A presentation on by law changes.
So thank you, Mr Chair, appreciate that and good afternoon, everyone. Just like to start by acknowledging that Mark Pickford couldn't be with us today due to a commitment that he has, so I'll be presenting on his behalf. He is identified as a presenter and I'm going to do my absolute best to get very close to his level of expertise as we go through this recommended. Change that we're bringing forward to the bylaw. Administration is before you today with the recommendation that the committee of the whole does recommend a council. That be by law twenty one slash two zero two four be given three readings. With regards to our emergency management bylaw. As your folks may be aware, the proposed bylaw amendments are required to align with our emergency management bylaw with changes that have come forward from the province of Alberta. More specifically through Bill twenty one. Bill twenty one came into force on May thirtieth of this year as the province of the government of Alberta, sorry amended the Emergency Management Act. To enhance and modernize the framework of of emergency or for emergency management while ensuring it remains effective in addressing contemporary changes. Of course, one of those primary reasons or primary reasons for the amendment was to address the increase in frequency and complexity. Of emergencies and disaster disasters such as natural disasters, disasters, much like what we just experienced in in the Jasper region. And pandemics as we move forward. Bill twenty one also aims to improve a community's resilience and readiness to provide clearer guidelines for declaring states of local emergencies, otherwise known as a soul. And of course, to be more flexible in the areas of emergency preparedness, response, recovery and mitigation. And I think as everyone knows, those are the pillars of emergency management. Few others key changes to the Emergency Management Act include strengthening the rules and responsibilities of local governments. And emergency management organizations, and this, of course, is to ensure that they have the necessary authority and resources to act swiftly in the event of an emergency taking place. Or the imminent threat of an emergency happening upon a community. It also emphasizes the importance of collaboration and communication between different levels of government and and non-government organization. As well as the private sector, and that's a very unique step. Further, the amendment reflects a need to be more proactive approach in emergency management as as previously mentioned, focused on risk reduction and the community's resilience and Bill twenty one encourages just that. And then also encourages the development of a comprehensive risk assessment and emergency plans to be created. To consider each community's unique vulnerability and capabilities with regards to addressing a concern in that vulnerable area. Just very quickly and to highlight the proposed changes of the bylaw and of course attached are the amending bylaw and then the red line version of the of our bylaw. Of our emergency management bylaw, however, at that high level, where there's been modifications to add a requirement to the declaration of a soul. Also to clarify how a soul may may be terminated by the lieutenant governor. Also, we added the requirement for the committee to notify the minister forthwith of the termination of a declaration of a soul, so they understand. Which community may have a soul or when they when they do cease to be in effect. And of course, there's added reporting requirements for the agency to report to the minister any information as required. The remaining amendments updated or provided within the updated bylaw are very specific to us locally here in the city of St Albert, and that's the removal of the term emergency operations center. As we now use the more modernized term term ICP or incident command post. And also to clarify the term director, and this is to ensure consistency with the act and to clarify that the director of the agency is also known as the director director of emergency management. And finally, to clarify the roles of the emergency management committee and agency, so they align with the act. As mentioned, council has been provided both the amending bylaw and the red line version. And with that, I would just like to close in saying that the emergency management or emergency management provincial legislation. And regulation requires the city of St Albert to maintain an emergency management plans and programs, which we do. This service, these services address the preparation and approval and maintenance and coordination of the local authorities, city of St Albert. And our emergency plans and programs as required by the province. Emergency plans and programs are intended to provide prompt coordination of our resources when consequences of emergency or disaster and subsequent recovery are outside the scope of our normal day to day operations. Again, administration is asking for the committee of the whole to recommend the council that this bylaw or these amendments be given three readings at the upcoming meeting and be happy to answer any questions that you do have.
Thank you, Mr Cook for your presentation and council, any questions? Councillor Mackay?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just so I. Thank you for the presentation, I appreciate you providing of it. There is with the amendments to the Emergency Management Act, there's no. And I'll use this term kind of in parentheses, there's no downloading anymore. Responsibilities onto the community other than some of these kind of things about reporting and some of the minor little kind of tweaking in relation to that, but. A number of years ago, the province changed. Some of their financial and actually potentially municipalities could be on the hook for ten percent of actually what the costs would be in in relation to it. So there's no other surprises or no other impacts with these changes on to us other than what you've outlined in your presentation?
None that we're aware of, no, to to be direct to your point, no, none that we're aware of, there is some terminology with regards to the province's ability to step in and declare a soul on behalf of a community. However, that's always been there, the wording I've been assured by. Mark Pickford or manager of emergency management that that wording is actually just more cleaning up the language which already exists. So nothing more was reported or identified by us.
But I would add that even should the province do that, there's nothing in the act that mandates that.
Before.
Before.
Yeah.
Where we go, we have.
We're going to reconvene, I believe. Mayor Herron is taking call right now, but she'll be back hopefully for the in camera item. We have Natalie back and councillor. Councillor Jolly back, councillor Vermont ski back, so we'll. And councillor Broadhead will be joining us short.
It's slightly dead.
Turn it over on agenda items six point two to Mr Everett Cook for. A presentation on by law changes.
So thank you, Mr Chair, appreciate that and good afternoon, everyone. Just like to start by acknowledging that Mark Pickford couldn't be with us today due to a commitment that he has. So I'll be presenting on his behalf. He is identified as a presenter. And I'm going to do my absolute best to get very close to his level of expertise as we go through this recommended. Change that we're bringing forward to the bylaw. Administration is before you today with the recommendation that the committee of the whole does recommend a council. That be by law twenty one slash two zero two four be given three readings. With regards to our emergency management bylaw. As your folks may be aware, the proposed bylaw amendments are required to align with. Our emergency management bylaw with changes that have come forward from the province of Alberta. More specifically through Bill twenty one. Bill twenty one came into force on May thirtieth of this year. As the province of the government of Alberta, sorry amended the Emergency Management Act. To enhance and modernize the framework of of emergency or for emergency management. While ensuring it remains effective in addressing contemporary changes. Of course, one of those primary reasons or primary reasons for the amendment was to address the increase in frequency and complexity. Of emergencies and disaster disasters such as natural disasters. Disasters much like what we just experienced in in the Jasper region and pandemics. As we move forward. Bill twenty one also aims to improve a community's resilience and readiness to provide clearer guidelines for declaring states of local emergencies, otherwise known as a soul. And of course, to be more flexible in the areas of emergency preparedness, response, recovery and mitigation. And I think as everyone knows, those are the pillars of emergency management. Few others key changes to the Emergency Management Act include strengthening the rules and responsibilities of local governments. And emergency management organizations, and this, of course, is to ensure that they have the. Necessary authority and resources to act swiftly in the event of an emergency taking place or. The imminent threat of an emergency happening upon a community. It also emphasizes the importance of collaboration and communication between different levels of government and and non-government organization. As well as the private sector, and that's a very unique step. Further, the amendment reflects a need to be more proactive approach in emergency management as as previously mentioned, focused on risk reduction in a community's resilience and Bill twenty one encourages just that. And then also encourages the development of a comprehensive risk assessment and emergency plans to be created. To consider each community's unique vulnerability and capabilities with regards to addressing a concern in that vulnerable area. Just very quickly and to highlight the proposed changes of the bylaw and of course attached are the amending bylaw and then the red line version of the of our bylaw. Of our emergency management bylaw, however, at that high level. We're there's been modifications to add a requirement to the declaration of a soul. Also to clarify how a soul may may be terminated by the lieutenant governor. Also, we added the requirement for the committee to notify the minister forthwith of the termination of a declaration of a soul, so they understand. Which community may have a soul or when they when they do cease to be in effect. And of course, there's added reporting requirements for the agency to report to the minister any information as required. The remaining amendments updated or provided within the updated bylaw. Are very specific to us locally here in the city of St. Albert, and that's the removal of the term emergency operations center. As we now use the more modernized turn term ICP or incident command post. And also to clarify the term director, and this is to ensure consistency with the act and to clarify that the director of the agency is also known as the director director of emergency management. And finally, to clarify the roles of the emergency management committee and agency, so they align with the act. As mentioned, council has been provided both the amending bylaw and the red line version. And with that, I would just like to close in saying that the emergency management or emergency management provincial legislation. And regulation requires the city St. Albert to maintain an emergency management plans and programs, which we do. This service, these services address the preparation and approval and maintenance and coordination of the local authority of the city of St. Albert. And our emergency plans and programs as required by the province. Emergency plans and programs are intended to provide prompt coordination of our resources when consequences of emergency or disaster. And subsequent recovery are outside the scope of our normal day to day operations. Again, administration is asking for the committee of the whole to recommend the council that this bylaw or these amendments be given three readings at the upcoming meeting and. Be happy to answer any questions that you do have.
Thank you, Mr Cook for your presentation and council, any questions? Councillor Mackay?
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. Just so I. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate you providing of it. There is with the amendments to the Emergency Management Act, there's no. And I'll use this term kind of in parentheses, there's no downloading anymore. Responsibilities onto the community other than some of these kind of things about reporting and some of the minor little kind of tweaking in relation to that, but. A number of years ago, the province changed. Some of their financial and actually potentially municipalities could be on the hook for ten percent of actually what the costs would be in in relation to it. So there's no other. Surprises or no other impacts with these changes on to us other than what you've outlined in your presentation?
None that we're aware of, no, to to be direct to your point, no, none that we're aware of. There is some terminology with regards to the province's ability to step in and declare a soul on behalf of a community. However, that's always been there. The wording I've been assured by. Mark Pickford, our manager of emergency management, that that wording is actually just more cleaning up the language which already exists. So nothing more was reported or identified by us.
But I would add that even should the province do that, there's nothing in the act that mandates them to pay for the results of that, right? That's the only sort of maybe sort of related issue.
Yeah, okay. All right, I just was just a little afraid of. Unintended consequences are those little things that might be hiding behind some of these changes that may have an impact on municipalities and ours in particular. If you don't see any, then.
Great. If any other questions from council?
I'll make the motion if you want.
Don't don't see anyone. Natalie Shelley, you're okay? Yeah. Councillor Mackay, would you like to?
I'll make the motion. Yeah, that static media of the whole recommend to council that by law twenty one last twenty twenty four be given three readings.
Any comments?
No, my comments are all contained in relation to the presentation and these are just. Necessary requirements to our bylaw based on changes put on us by Bill twenty one. And it allows us to clean up some of our terminal.
Thank you. Keep call for the vote comment. Yes, yes, yes. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms Cook for presenting. We'd like to just call a five minute break to see if the mayor can rejoin us before we.
Chair, Chair, before we do that, I know that there's some IRs that need to be read into the record. Are we able to do that now? I I don't have mine in front of me, but I could find them pretty quick.
Perfect. Thank you, councillor Jolly for bringing that up. I think I I'm not sure, Remy, if you can help us. On any of the. IRs that might have been submitted.
Mayor Aaron has one. About the hookah lounges. Oh, never done this, but I think I can just read it, which is on our way. And the councillor Jolly. There was your IR about the Canada Alberta jobs grant. And then the IR about the local transit fares.
So councillor Jolly has two, so maybe she could read those in first.
Into the chat right away for you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm looking for them, but it's there's a lot of emails having to do with those.
They were just getting your copied and pasted into that for you.
They are on the council member's site, Natalie.
That's okay, we keep.
Right away here.
All right, so my first one is just regarding the removal of the Canada Alberta jobs grant. Do we have a sense of how much of an impact this will have on local nonprofits or other eligible organizations? Yeah, that's the IR.
Okay.
And then the second one, what would be the revenue and expense impact of eliminating local transit fares for adults and seniors?
And I'll read the one in for Mayor Heron. And please get an understanding of the provincial regulations surrounding hookah lounges and how some municipalities allow them. Along with this can get the steps be outlined as to how to make amendments to our various bylaws. To allow allow an application applicant to open a legal lounge here in St. Albert. I would also like to open to any restrictions and administrations make fit to make. To make this fit into our community.
Good. I'll tell you emphasize hookah.
So I think that's the three IRs unless anybody else had councillor. Use or.
Can't even think of one to make up.
You can't even make that up. Okay, maybe we'll just call a five minute recess. To allow the mayor to rejoin us before we go the camera, because I think it's an item that you wanted to attend, so.
And and to the media, this is it. Like, we're just gonna go into camera, so.
So we'll just go till twelve forty five. I think that's.
Yeah.
Any minutes?
Be right there, so.